Okay, good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and reconvene special meeting of Folsom City Council for Tuesday, October 24th, 2017. Any final action or report out a closed session, Mr. City Attorney?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, no final action.
Okay, so with that, we will adjourn the special meeting of Folsom City Council and convene the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, October 24th, 2017. The clerk, please call the roll.
Council members Nicholas.
Here.
Sheldon.
Here.
Gaylord.
Here.
Al.
Here.
And Maureen.
Here. And with that, would everyone please rise and join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
Okay, so let's start off here. So any agenda updates to advise us on?
We have one agenda update on item 7B. The agenda report was, has been distributed to the city council members, and there's copies at the back table.
Okay, thank you. So that was 7B. Okay, so with that, we will move into scheduled presentations. So our first scheduled presentation is a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom, proclaiming November 3rd through the 5th, 2017 as Buddy Poppy Weekend in support of the VFW's Veteran Rehabilitation and Service Programs. And if I could have Jim and Nan Bloodworth join me up front here to accept the proclamation. We always get a large print version here for our old eyes, but I think I'm good with the, with the print here, so. So it is especially poignant, as you'll hear the words in the proclamation here, but timed certainly with our upcoming Veterans Day here in the city of Folsom. So before I start with this, I just want to give everybody an encouraging word. So Ernie, remind me, our Veterans Day Parade will be on Veterans Day?
11th of Saturday.
Right, so the Saturday, not the observed holiday on Friday, the 10th. So encourage everybody to come out for the city of Folsom's Veterans Day Parade. So with that, this is a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom declaring November 3rd through the 5th, 2017 as Buddy Poppy Weekend in the city of Folsom. Whereas 2017 marks the centennial anniversary of the United States entering World War I, the Buddy Poppy Program was founded based on the red poppies that flower naturally in Flanders Field, a battleground and war cemetery along the Western Front between France and Belgium. Whereas the Buddy Poppy is about a red flower that promotes patriots. Today, veterans of the former war Buddy Poppy are assembled by disabled, immediate, aging veterans in Veterans Administration hospitals and facilities across the country and are used to raise funds to help veterans. Whereas Folsom's Veterans Hall receives calls often requesting assistance for a veteran or a family member that needs immediate help. And proceeds from, and proceeds from fundraisers like the Buddy Poppy Program, mean funds can be readily available for them. Whereas Folsom is a patriotic and generous city honoring its veterans with traditions that set it aside from other cities, its Veterans Day Parade is different standard. Whereas we encourage Folsom citizens to support and wear the Buddy Poppy proudly, knowing they are helping immediate veterans. Now therefore, I, Andy Moore, Mayor of the city of Folsom, on behalf of the Folsom City Council, do hereby proclaim November 3rd through the 5th, 2017 to be Buddy, Buddy Poppy Weekend. Hire each individual in the community to take the time to honor all veterans and support Buddy Poppy. And proclaim the 24th day of October, 2017. And as we congratulate with applause and effort, I would also ask that applause be also recognized for any of the veterans that we have in the audience today. So with that, thank you very much for this effort.
Well, I want to thank everybody. Folsom is, and I'm going to say, the most patriotic city in California. I've lived here now 10 years, and it is one place where you can see where the veterans are really appreciated. For those of you who actually attended the Folsom Pro Rodeo this year, patriotism is just phenomenal. We actually worked with the rodeo and was able to collect $6,000 by us being promoted there, and we ended up 11,000 poppies. The poppy has declined in its notoriety when I was a kid, early last century. On Veterans Day, you could not see somebody walking the streets without a poppy. Today, most people have no idea what the poppy is. As you can see, I have a, I am wearing a poppy. So I ask that when you do see somebody with poppies handing out, that you might accept that with pride, and at the same time, you might want to donate, because I can assure you that every penny does go to a veteran. So again, I want to thank everybody for this. And on the weekend before Veterans Day, on this Buddy Poppy Weekend, we will be stationed at Mary's Gold Miner Cafe, wonderful breakfast, Safeway, and also Walmart. So I do appreciate everything. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so next, under scheduled presentations, is a resolution of commendation honoring Folsom-Cordoba Community Partnership in their 25th anniversary. And I've asked councilmember Roger Gaylord to take care of the honors of presenting this to Robert Sanger. He's the executive director of the Folsom Community Partnership. And if Robert could join us up front. Robert, good to see you. And also joining him is Brian Wallace.
I'm going to choose to read the big print. A lot of words. So again, this is a resolution of commendation with the ownership for Folsom-Cordoba Community Partnership for their 25 years of service to the community. Whereas the Folsom Community, Folsom-Cordoba Community Partnership was created in August 1992 as the Folsom-Cordoba Schools Foundation to support children and parents of the Folsom-Cordoba Unified School District. Whereas the Folsom Cordoba Community Partnership's mission is to enhance the education, health, and well-being of children, youth, and adults of our community. And whereas the Folsom-Cordoba Community Partnership envisions a unified, self-sufficient community in which youth and adults are achieving their greatest potential. And whereas the Folsom-Cordoba Community Partnership's mission and vision support their work to build strong families. It, I'm sorry, it meets and need, meets the needs of struggling parents to increase self-sufficiency, promote youth development through positive peer and adult relationships, and develop employment skills for individuals to achieve their career goals. And whereas the Folsom-Cordoba Community Partnership has two primary focuses. One is to prevent child abuse through parent education and support, free family activities and vital resources. The other is to assist families in achieving self-sufficiency through job search assistance, providing scholarships for career training, personal skill building, education, youth leadership, and career exploration. And whereas the Folsom-Cordoba Community Partnership brings together resources and programming in the family, in a family resource center and job center to create a one-stop-shop experience which encourages and supports families as they identify their own needs and reach their goals. And now therefore, I, not Andrew, Roger, councilmember for the city of Folsom, on behalf of the Folsom City Council and the citizens of the community, do hereby congratulate the Folsom-Cordoba Community Partnership for their 25 years of service in the community and thank them for their service and outstanding contributions to the city of Folsom, proclaimed this 24th day of October, 2017.
Thank you. And we want to thank the city of Folsom for being supportive of our organization for the past 25 years. We look forward to serving the community for 25-plus years. And as we continue to develop our services, we look forward to partnering with a variety of community members and businesses in the city of Folsom to make that happen for the families that need us most. And I just want to take an opportunity to invite everyone. We are actually having a 25-year anniversary celebration at our Family Resource Center. That's going to be November 9th from 5 to 6. And our honorable mayor is actually going to be one of our guest speakers there. So I invite you to come. It's the Folsom-Cordoba Community Partnership, and we hopefully will be able to celebrate that with you. So thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Thanks, Robert. Thanks for all the great work with that, that program and organization, and I do look forward to the visit on the 9th. So thank, thanks again. Okay, so next item, please.
Next item is scheduled presentation, 5C, presentation by Municipal Resource Group Regarding Library Needs Assessment.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Lori Easterwood. I'm your city librarian. I've met all of you guys individually, but never had the opportunity to speak to you here. But I'm not going, I'm not here to speak too much. I'm here to introduce Mike Oliver with Municipal Resource Group, who was engaged to do a needs assessment of the Folsom Public Library. And I'm going to turn it over to Mike.
Great. Thanks, Lori. Evening, Mike.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's a pleasure to be here this evening to give a brief overview of our study and the work and the results that we found. This is a joint project that was done by myself and Anne Marie Gold, who has moved to the East Coast and couldn't get back here tonight to make the presentation. You may know that Anne Marie was the director of the Sacramento County Library System, and then also before that, Contra Costa County Library System. I had worked with MRG for a number of years. I was also in the area here in Sacramento for a number of years. I was the first city manager in Citrus Heights. We incorporated 20 years ago. And was there for three years and did some other city manager stints. But the one thing I wanted to mention is the city of Folsom, at least from those employees I worked with in Citrus Heights and the community, has always been seen as a special place. It has a community identity that is unshakable. It's great geography, and you have so many amenities that it's, it's seen by a lot of folks as a really neat community. And that's what we saw reflected in our study of the library. We were asked to take a look at your library services today, how they're presented, how they operate, what the capacity was for growth, and then also to take a look at the South of 50 development. As you know, that master plan community is underway, and in the future, has space for, designated for a library expansion, for a facility on the South of 50 that would serve those residents and actually the whole community to the extent that they, they went to that, to that side of the highway. Lori's going to help me figure out how to push the buttons on this thing since, oh, great, thank you. What we found, and just as we went through our study, we wanted to make sure that we connected with the community. And so we did a number of different input exercises with folks. We did a library overview, and there's a comparison that's pretty detailed with a number of comparable cities. And then, of course, we looked at the Folsom Plan area, and we've developed some findings and recommendations that I'll go over with you briefly. We found that the city's library in those comparisons is hardworking, very efficient. You spend time there, you know. It is, it is popular, it is used, it is loved, and the staff is doing everything they can with the resources they have. Today, there isn't capacity for growth, either programmatically or physically, in the building, which is a good thing. But in the future, there will be more residents in the area, and so there's some need to provide that other facility in the longer term. The folks we worked with were engaged through a community forum, and you, as you can see, they identified a number of different areas of interest for the library for the future. Just to highlight, I think the programming and youth services were a big emphasis. Obviously, books are still a very important part, particularly for children, of libraries, a place where they can be introduced to the concept of learning. And then move into, as we saw with the stakeholder interviews, more technology-related things. As you know, today, unless you're able to access the internet and to use many of the programs that are commonplace, it's very difficult to be in the world and be successful. And the focus, focus groups, we found, they emphasized that it was a wonderful gathering place, important for the community, and again, reiterated the, the interest in technology. The library, outside the library, of course, as you know, the library goes to the farmer's market and goes out into the community, and that's seen as a wonderful addition to the, the library's programs. For the users and usage, just a couple of highlights that, that I'd make is that they, library is used higher than the national norm. So we find that it is a library that is active, is used, more frequently visited, and by those visitors, used in a more expansive way than, than nationally normally the case. We also found that the usages, that I'm sure you intuitively would understand, that the personal devices, those iPads, et cetera, that are used, are used for more social media content, but then the computers are used really for library services and reaching the outside world. Those are important portals for folks to be able to come into the library and, and reach the outside world. Looking at the library future, the emphasis there, I think, would be on the digital services. Folks are very concerned about their security when they are on the internet and they're using these services and training and providing them educational opportunities at the library is a very important part, because not all of us are either in a business setting or in a work setting where we can, can achieve that level of competency and, and safety and security for our materials. Again, services to targeted customers, there are a number of different groups and organizations that can benefit from outreach by the library and involvement in the library, and education is certainly a large part of that. When we looked at South of 50 and the planning, I've been involved in a couple of master plan community areas and worked with different cities in those. And as you know, you take a look five, 10, 15, 20 years down the road and project build-out. And from that study and that work, the allocation of resources is, is established. And so with your plan, there's a certain rate that will be charged to residential and, and commercial development to provide funds for that new library in the South of 50. One of the things that we did was some comparisons, and I'm sure you've seen those in the report, between the fee that would be charged for the city of Folsom for development based on a residential unit and some of the other comparative agencies. And at this point, their fees are higher, and they will be able to use those fees to develop more resources on a per-unit basis. And that's important, because it's residential users that comprise the vast majority of the users of the library. And so those residents will come to the library when it's present in South of 50, and they will use it. The question is the adequacy of that, that facility. So our suggestion and one of our recommendations is that you've got about five years of planning time now before you would ultimately do the 10-year construction of that, that project. And so during that period, we would urge the city to take a look at that fee and to, to examine the building and its capacities and do some pre-planning and see if, in fact, that facility, if the current fees are used and the current plans are used, if it would be adequate for the community that you envisioned there. Now, that's not easy to do, because now we're looking 10 years out, but as that occurs, you'll, you'll have a better chance, I think, to have the congruence that you, you want for those residents when they actually arrive. So we just put one little last thing here that shows, sort of summarizes the study. Today, you have a library that's hardworking and efficient. Capacity is limited. The future, we've identified some of those service areas we think that are important to focus on. And then on South of 50, we have made some suggestions about how best to ensure that you do, at the end, end up with the, the kind of project that you're, you'll, will work for the community and work for the city. Be glad to answer questions if I can.
Great. Questions for Mike? There, there is for those who haven't seen the agenda, there's a lot of material here in the, the assessment, so we appreciate you putting all that together. Ernie, did you have a question coming?
Yeah, I'm probably going to dominate this a little bit, because I'm looking at the honorable mayor, ex-mayor, Robert Holden, who said way back when, called me up one day and appointed me to be on a committee to referee with three other people establishing the Folsom Library and the Friends of the Library. So I go way back to this issue. My first reaction of reading all 189 pages of this, I had to be counselled by a city manager about a different perspective. I didn't have it here. In fact, I was quite a reading this at the beginning. In fact, I was damn mad reading it at the beginning. But then again, I said, well, here's a, here's a case that buys on it, that don't know how we got here. And you're saying you're validating what we thought we did, or were going to do as far as the energy of the library, the acceptance of the library, activity of the library. But I, I, I'm a chartered member of the Friends of the Library, and I, you talk about nonprofits, but I don't see that mentioned anywhere. That's okay. I'm going to mention it, because without them, you wouldn't have the child program that you get outstanding here, because they donate tens of thousands of dollars every year for that program, and they earmark it to the kids, which I'm a big kids advocate too. But, you know, I always say one thing, and I said it right at the beginning, I was at the November 16th, where we had eight people. That was the initial outbreak, and I didn't think that went well. And the library should concentrate on library primarily, that's its purpose. And we've had, at one time, we have one councilman no longer here, actually made the remark in the public, that why do we need books? We got computers. Well, I would never in my life, and I've been around a long time, accept that. And I do donate approximately 40 books. I, I belong to the literary guide, and I get books and I read them, and I turn them in, and a lot of them go into the library thing, which is the way it should be. Never think of getting rid of books. Now, if you're going to do the electronics aspect and add more, because people, you get younger people like Roger that's more attuned to that, okay? So we can't ignore them, but they are old seniors, you know, we still like to take a book and read it in a chair.
I still read books.
Yeah, right. I know he does. But as I gone, gone through this more and more, why, I disagree with the idea of making a competitive size-wise, libraries out of 50. I, I get worried about anything that we even propose to make it an island on its own. This is Folsom City. I live on the other side of the lake, the river. This is the middle of the Folsom, and that will be the south end of the Folsom. But there's only one Folsom, and I don't want to see another branch where they don't come to the main branch. Okay? However, we have talked, and maybe, you know, when you, when you, the people, and Steve was one of the members and the city manager, are planning South of 50. You make a guesstimate, but you know, you have only so much money, and that's a, that's about a $900 million project going on down there. So you have to move the resources. I think when we get closer to that, it's going to be a problem, but the library's going to have a problem, because the house is going to come before that library comes. And those people are going to come over here and impact your library. Like, they're going to impact the sports program, the schools, and everything else, until we catch up, and we will catch up. But I, I, I looked at this, saying, let's make it a big one. I said, no, not if it implies it's all by themselves. They're not, they're part of Folsom. It's a new area. It's not a new Folsom. It's a new development area. There's a distinction in my mind, and a lot of people in this town get mixed up. They think it's a new Folsom. It's not a new Folsom. It's a continuation of the Folsom we have right now. Okay? But on the, on the good side of this, I've read all the inquiries that they got, and my mind was just going, mm, and I don't need another project, I can assure you that. But as I looked at some of those inputs, there's some damn good ideas there, okay? I mean, I don't know how you can do them, you know, but they are good. So, and, and your data, the statistics that you maintain on the, on the library is outstanding. I mean, that's good stuff, and I'm going to keep this as a special book and answer the reason I'm going to get more involved with the library. Since I got on the council, I, there haven't been that, although I'm still a chartered member, and I bring my books every year. But I, looking at this, this, as, as the city manager said, it's supposed to stir your, your energy. Well, it certainly has done that to me. Okay? And there are good things and there are other things. But my, my final word to get off my soapbox, you have a library, and the library takes care of the Folsom people. And if there are other people who want to come in, that's fine. And if you can do it by communication, where they can pick up a book or have a book delivery, that's great. I have no problem with that. But the primary source is to provide a place where people can learn, feel comfortable. I was confused until I got through the whole thing about what you meant by safety. The way you pointed out safety, I didn't realize you were talking about safety on the, on the computer. I thought you meant safety of the location. I couldn't understand that, but later on, I figured it out. But this is a good report. This is good for learning. It's, it, it's something we all should keep, and I think, I think it proves that the, the wisdom of the, Mr. Holden has got me involved in way back when, you'd never seen fights until you were a part of that group. And it was, it was horrendous. But it was worth it, because look what you got. Okay? Look what you got. And look what you're going to get to complement what you got. So I say good to all the libraries, all the volunteers, the Friends of the Library, all the library staff, don't get that. And the good people of Folsom to go and use it. Okay? We have a great talent. All these stats show you, we have, we have pretty much wealth, but remember, not everybody in this town's wealthy. Okay? And that library, it can be a mecca for them to come to. Okay? Because you can go in and read a book or check out a book. You can't maybe necessarily buy it. I buy a lot of books, but I give them to you. Okay? But not everybody can do that. So that library has to do that role. Okay? And I, and I, from all indication of this report, they are doing a darn good job. And I, I see no reason why, and as far as this council, they've always been supportive of the library. You remember, the library reopened in 2007. I came on this council 2008, and the recession came with me. Okay? And from 2008, '09 on to recently, the last couple of years, we didn't have a lot of resources. In fact, it's amazing we ever kept our library open. Many libraries in Sacramento County, they closed, or had maybe a day or two, but we didn't. We, we, we kept going. Now, we do need, I'm going to count our eyes, all those, I'm going to take time to go through and, and try and how many, send, expand the hours. I would say it's probably at least 40 percent. Okay? I don't know. I think, 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 I think,
Lori, thanks. I do have a request to speak on this item, so Bill Smith.
Thank you.
Evening, Bill.
I don't know, I'm a little shy. Mom. Okay, all right.
Don't think so, Bill.
Here's what I've come up with while I was sitting here. Dale Carnegie was one of the great givers, like the Giving Pledge with Bill Gates. Bill Gates was able to compete with the girls when he was a little guy, and he was at the library out reading them all during the summer, reading programs. We had a Carnegie Library at Alameda where I was doing the military base conversion for 15 years, and they wanted to put a library out at the military base where they had a city. They had four lanes going in both directions when they had people coming to work, 15,000 people a day. So when you have extended learning, there's a gentleman who wanted, he came from Berkeley, and he wanted to set up a school at the military base in Alameda. And what he wanted to do was extended learning regressed to that population and bring them in and get the industrialization conversion of the military set on the right course. Here, the libraries are not just efficient, they're effective. If you take your efficiencies, you take minus 1%, minus 2%, minus, but if you add them all up, you get your effectiveness. Add them all down. And so if you take 10 gigabytes, which is what the main library's running at, when I first learned the Macintosh, it was Shep, and he was going so fast, I couldn't follow what he was doing on the screen. So some people are just more adept at doing things because of the way they eat and the way they get their health. So if people are able to ride their bicycle to the library and have lots of parking, we'd be much better off with our health, too, and people could study better. And if the library had more extended hours and people could go to one library or another and could go to the advanced learning, I was able to go ahead of class when I was in school. My sister, they wanted her to skip a grade, and so what I was able to do was to take what I was doing from school because of my family being a bunch of people who were older than me and having all their experience to go by, and having them all just go play because they were like athletes, and I hear the baseball. So my cousin pitched for the A's, a sidearm. You've already heard of Raleigh Fingers, that's not him. The other team won the World Series because they wouldn't let him pitch, and he knew all about the game and the team. And he recruited this kid, and he went down and set world records everywhere he went. So my whole family does all that stuff because they just have the genetics, okay? So when you have the ability to do things, you need to be able to be assertive about it without having to be aggressive about it. So you have to be quiet in the library. I met a young man, I was just speaking to somebody today about, he was, he had a Stradivarius final limb. He was a Russian guy, and he had a three-
Got about 20 seconds, Bill, so can you wrap it up? Got a final thought for us here?
I'll just go twice as fast. So this gentleman had a three-story house in San Francisco, and he was at the Juilliard School with his Stradivarius. So he was quite the guy, and he just was yelling all the time at the library. So what you want to be able to do is you want to be able to be like Carnegie and bring in the proper repatriated money and cause this to be extended learning, and you can go a lot of other schools, too.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Bill. All right. So that concludes our scheduled presentation. So with that, next item, please.
The next item is business from the floor, and we have four speakers. First one is Bill Smith.
Okay, Bill, we're just going to get you up here again, so, all right. So what do you got for us here?
My uncle used to want me to go speak in public, so I did, and he wanted to come and see me speak. I used to want to get my mother to come along with me because I was able to take what I was doing and advance it because of the learning I had with statistics. I just went back to the Statistics Department where Lincoln Moses had left. Turned out, I met his son when I hitchhiked over there one day, and I was going to the Patton Library, and this lady told me that I was quicker than anybody else that ever walked in a room in Silicon Valley. So I was looking at the things on solar energy because it turns out Cindy Eichmeyer was her name, was up in Tahoe, and her father had done the Kingsburg grade, and he had built rock into the hill, and he had actually not built, he had cleared away the rock. And what I'd realized doing was taking a rock and clearing it away and having a rock house. Only you'd be like the caveman, and you would have something that would last and last and last, and it'd be built like they ended up coming up with. So when you're able to apply statistics and do inverse reasoning, you realize a lot of things that people have to go learn about way later in life. So 40 years ago, when I left college, they had not gotten me there because Lincoln Moses had become the Energy Information Administration with the president at the time. So what I'm pointing out here is the fact that you can take things that are all worldly and you can- First thing I got at the library was this book that this young lady at the library took from college, a college class, and she had the book in the library. She went and got it off the shelf. I couldn't believe it. She had a course in college, and she went and did my astrology chart for me, and it turned out that when she did eight hours at work, she was doing the trucking scales, and so she sat there all day and weighed the trucks and made sure everything was right. And so she had eight hours, and she spent eight hours and eight pages, and it came out meat. And so what part of it was, was Capricorn's party endlessly with Aquarius, as she was Aquarius. So I guess she was on top of what was going on. So anyway, when you can be able to realize your own self and put yourself in your work, you end up loving your work. 95% of people don't like to work, and today, people are going home and they're looking to make $80,000 a year. I let the mayor know back when I left the military town, Beverly Johnson, Alameda. She was a family lawyer, right across from the city council, and she became mayor, along with a lot of other people, who were great people in our society. It turns out that you have to have the right people influencing about what you're doing in life, and that way you can get ahead so you really want to be able to be justified with what you do. Mayor Miklos asked me 18 months ago for the two pages of notes I was reading from that got changed, and it turned out that I had been invaded after I came up with 217 documents in 17 months, actually, six months. It was 217 documents, and there was 40 of them that were on my work. I started out by rewriting to start out, to get something that would make sense to everybody.
He'd bill you about 20 seconds.
Amy Lovens asked me to review his work. He just did his second institute, and they just had Austin, Texas, and that's where he was going in November, October, November, last year, and I couldn't get on their forum. And he asked me to review his work a couple times, so I rewrote it from the beginning. He had presented to Jimmy Carter, I believe. And so here's where we're at.
Okay, Bill, got to wrap up here.
I'll pick up the action. I've got a guy doing polls, and I want to get some feedback on the vehicle I want to do for Enterprise Fleet for this community and share my used vehicles.
All right. Thanks, Bill. Okay, next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Diane Segelski, followed by YK Chalam Charla.
You know, if you just want to get to the podium there, there you go. That'll be a more comfortable spot for you.
I just had two questions. First of all, with all the construction that's going on in south end of the city, what is being planned to relieve the traffic at East Bidwell and Iron Point? Because there's so much construction going on in the south as well as in the north, and that is with the intersection, with the U-turn from the people in the shopping area where the In-N-Out Burger is and all of that shopping center. That creates a real problem with people making U-turns to get back on the freeway. And it's just, I understood that we were supposed to get on and off ramps at Oak Avenue Parkway and also between East Bidwell and Eldorado Hills.
Right, right.
And is that still in the works?
Yeah, so let me just, you know, just for the edification of folks and not attempting to agendize something that's not agendized, but we just did have a presentation on approving that intersection with some lane change configuration. But there are a number of other things going on. Iron Point will continue onto Saratoga, which is the Eldorado side of Iron Point, where it ends at the county line. So that'll take traffic into Eldorado Hills Boulevard. That'll be a little bit of relief. But then traffic you talk about from the In-N-Out Burger, that shopping complex in there, there'll be a route back to the freeway that goes up Old Placerville and then a new Alder Creek Parkway and back around. So there's going to be a number of changes that will be relieving that in the relatively short term.
With all the construction that's going on, that is not going to begin to do it justice.
Well, and then longer term, let me finish, Vice Mayor, I'll take care of this. So longer term, our interchanges at Empire Ranch Road and Oak Avenue. So, yep, relief is coming short term and long term.
They will have those in.
Yes. So second question?
My second question was, they've been painting the walls on Riley Street and on Oak Avenue Parkway, but they seem to have stopped at Hallidon and Haverhill. They're not doing the walls on those two streets.
Okay. So what we will do is work with our lighting and landscape folks and get some answers for you on that because that would be who's taking care of that. So we will get back in contact with you and get you an answer for that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, next speaker, please.
Next speaker is YK Chalam Charla, followed by Ajit Nattu.
All right. Good evening, YK. Good to see you.
Great to be here. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. My name is YK Chalam Charla. My better half here, Aparna, and we are living at 1755 Abbey Phil Court. I'm here to thank the city and city administration allowing the Deepavali festivali, Diwali festivali, the lights, which is a significant of good, evil, bad. It's always, you know, a good thing to celebrate. It is one of the largest Indian festivals we celebrate across the world, and Folsom City is the only city allowed little bit of fireworks other than all the greater Sacramento cities. And we want to personally thank you, and like me, there are about little over 10,000 people celebrated. But at the same time, we are very cognizant about the recent fires. There is always a bucket of waters next to us, and we were doing only small things. Besides that, we were using more LED lights. So we want to again thank you and making Folsom City is more attractive for people to live in. And also one request, and I think this year, Elgro City did the celebrations for that city at their city hall. It's a request, knowing the number of people in Folsom City, maybe down the road in future years, we request Folsom City to consider that option.
Okay, great.
Thank you again.
Thanks, YK, and we appreciate your sensitivity to the fire danger. We have some fire personnel here. We're happy to hear your sensitivity to that, so thanks.
Once again, thank you very much.
All right. Next speaker, please.
Next and last speaker is Ajit Nattu.
Good evening. Thanks for giving me this chance to speak in front of council members. I have seen some of you next door when Indian Association of Sacramento had a function in August. Actually, I should have come before Chalam here to give my card because it looks like he stole my thunder.
YK does that a lot, so.
Today, I realized that you should come first. Anyway, point the same thing that we have a Indian community here has a very big event in the festival called Diwali. It's a festival of lights. And as he said that last week, I attended the event in City Council Hall in Elgro where Mayor spoke, Mayor was there to facilitate the function, and he spoke about it, and we had some small one-hour function. And if we request on behalf of Indian Association of Sacramento, for which I am the president, it would be great to show the unity and diversity if we have similar function. If you tell me what forms I have to fill, who I have to contact, we'll do that next year. And if we are allowed to do the fires, of course, within the realms of all the fire codes and everything, that will be great. So the same request, but on behalf of Indian Association of Sacramento, I'm putting the same request.
All right. Great, great. We'll get you connected to the right folks.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, does that conclude our speakers on business from the floor?
Yes.
Okay, so next item, please.
The next item is consent calendar.
Okay, so we have consent items A through H. Any council member wishing to pull an item for discussion or questions?
I'll move the items and just a reminder that it's revised 7B.
Right, so are we good? I'll go ahead and second the motion there. So with that, please call the roll on consent.
Councilmembers Miklos?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Hal?
Yes.
And Moran?
Yes, all right. Making great progress, though. So with that concludes consent, so next item under old business.
Next item is resolution number 10026, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a construction agreement with Public Restroom Company for the historic Folsom Station pre-manufactured restroom and appropriation of revenue and appropriation of expenditure.
All right, so who's taking this one up here? Is that you, Dave?
I believe that'd be me, yes.
Okay, Public Works Director, Dave Newt.
So this is an item to seek authorization to enter into an agreement with Public Restroom Company. As you know, we have one restroom, public restroom facility down in the historic district located within the parking structure. This project was identified as part of the previous redevelopment bonds that were rescinded from the state, and we're looking at a project of approximately $115,000 for a restroom. We will be taking this before the HDC for their review in the November meeting, and hopefully we'll get it to meet the architectural requirements for the aesthetics of the facility. It's planned to be a temporary facility until the development of the Sutter Road Development on Sutter Street.
Great, thanks, Dave. So questions for Dave on the side? Ernie?
Yeah, the first thing that comes to my mind, have we got the process reversed? Why would it go to the HCC after we approve it?
Well, we wanted to tee this up to make sure that we had authorization to move forward with the appropriation expenditure under the bonds. This was an identified project, but it's up to the council to move forward.
Mr. Mayor, perhaps I can add a little flavor to this, and Councilmember Sheldon is exactly right. This process seems a little bit backwards, but this is one of the rare instances where the city council doesn't have the final say on this particular project. So we brought it to you first because this is the first project that has matured from the city council's February 16 prioritization session where we prioritize the initial $2 million of the $8 million in bond revenues. And as you recall, that process where we came, where we went through an extensive list of the projects that made up that initial $8 million bond, came up with about $2 million worth of those projects. The process from this point forward is extensive. It includes seeking some design review by the boards, but it also includes a significant amount of paperwork and submittal to the Department of Finance with the state of California in order to be granted final approval to use these redevelopment funds. The on-ramp to getting in front of the DOF for these projects is an actual project approved by the city council. And so this is one of those rare instances where we just want to make sure that the council understands that this project is matured, it is one of your priority projects, and we do have to go then seek, you know, the final approval of others before it can be spent. So this is probably several months yet to go before you'll see a project come out here. And this is just, this is an absolute byproduct of the redevelopment dissolution process and the clumsiness that that legislation has led to. But you certainly heard me say enough, that enough times during the dissolution process, so I won't go back into them.
Does that mean that every time we go into those other priorities, that we're going through the same process?
It does. Yes. Every single time we seek to spend redevelopment dollars, there is a prescribed process with which we must follow.
Well, when I saw this on the agenda, I'm glad the city manager in my review brought me back to attention of, it's been a few months we haven't discussed this, because I thought, why are we spending money down there? But now I see because we approved two of them down there at one time, right?
Right.
But all I would say now that once we get, hopefully we get it approved and all that, I hope we have a real, solid, strong discussion with the Emergence Association for the upkeep of that thing. Because, you know, have you ever been down there for a Pedestrian Fair, and I hope you all have, or Antique Fair or anything? The one bathroom we have is overwhelmed. It just can't do it. And I've asked the council, the city manager, to talk with the people down on Sutter Street. They had to start contributing funds to take care of the manpower to manage those bathrooms. Now we'll have two because Park and Rec cannot handle it in a big event. They just cannot handle it. So I think they could use a few bucks out of their, whatever they get out of it, and I don't know how much they get out of it, to take care of that. Because it's just, I went over there personally to find out how it worked. It was horrible. It was two years ago. Now, maybe it's better now, I doubt it. Okay, but this will help, and I hope we can do it and do it well. But I do think we need to get, a partnership can't be where the city buys it and maintains it. A partnership is when we do it together, okay? And the primary purpose of that, that second bathroom is going to be for special events. It's obvious. The people that live just up in Figueroa and Mormon and that, they're not going to use that bathroom. They don't, or they may when they go down to the events, but they're not going to have to use it to live. So I think we just need to be sure we do the partnerships, that's all.
Good question for Dave. What's with the corrugated roof?
Well, we took an initial look at kind of cost factors and just came up with a sample facility. We'll be able to go back and tailor it as needed with the budget that we've identified.
So it's going to be galvanized?
Up to HDC. We can do shake, we can do galvanized metal roof, we can do all sorts of aesthetic treatments on it.
Okay.
Any other questions for Dave? Okay, no request to speak on this item, so we'll go ahead and, so go ahead and, okay, I'm going to give you one minute, Bill, okay? All right.
I've been made aware in the last week or so about what's going on down on the river. It's headed this way. I've been meeting the homeless people when I come up here and you're not here, like at Christmas and last time I was here. at Christmas, and last time I was here, and I passed a kid about 12 o'clock at night the other night, down at Watt Avenue, who had a big beard, and he was sitting on the other side of the street with a kid's bike on a trailer. I met a guy down at the Fair Oaks Library, who was apparently running a chop shop. Now, the guys that are up here, who are from here, that are acknowledged here, are okay people, these homeless people, they're really nice people, and they just, you know, people are falling out. So, you need, like, the affordable housing to accommodate these kind of people, because they need jobs, and they need appropriate jobs, where they'll be able to get at least $15 an hour. And when you have teachers and these kind of people, you need to be able to house these people, and this, this community's going to pick up. When this, when this community starts taking off with the, with the tourism, not just with the Johnny Cash trail...
Ten seconds, Bill, so, final thought?
You gotta police it, you gotta cut it off.
Okay.
You gotta have the, you gotta have the people able to not cause selenium...
Okay.
Instead of just saline in the, in the soil, it's going to destroy it.
All right.
And that's going to get in the river, it's going to be black mold, it's coming off the coast of Africa, and it's ruining the ocean.
All right, thanks, Bill. Okay, so, that, so, entertain a motion.
Move the item.
So, we got...
Second.
So, we'll say Councilmember Miklos with the motion by millisecond, and second by Councilmember Gaylord. Please call the roll.
Councilmembers Miklos?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Hal?
Yes.
And Morin?
Yes, all right. Next item, please.
Next item under old business is Prima Drive Extension Council Direction on the Design and Operation of a Future Roadway Segment.
Okay, thank you. So, it looks like Steve Banks has this item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Steve Banks, Community Development Department. The item before you this evening, as you referenced, is the Prima Drive Extension, and I wanted to give you a little bit of background as to, as to where we started and why we're here this evening. The Folsom Heights subdivision project was approved by the council back in July of this year. Includes a little over 530 residential units, as well as commercial and multifamily components. As part of that approval, the city council modified a number of conditions of approval. One of those modifications was that the Prima Drive Extension, which was approved as a full-access public roadway, should be limited to 27 feet in width, in terms of the roadway width. In addition to that, in response to concerns raised by neighbors at that particular meeting, a condition of approval was placed on the project to provide screening of the roadway to minimize lighting and noise impacts that might exist with construction of the roadway. And lastly, the condition was modified to prohibit construction traffic from using the extension of Prima Drive. Two weeks later, the council approved the DA amendment for the Folsom Heights subdivision project. At that meeting, a number of residents showed up again to voice their concern regarding the extension of Prima Drive. The mayor and the council indicated they would provide another opportunity for residents to, to voice their concerns regarding Prima Drive and this extension, and that's why we're, why we're here this evening. Lydia, could you dim the lights?
Sure.
Thank you. Just to refresh your memory, this is an aerial photograph showing the phasing for the Folsom Heights subdivision. The Prima Drive Extension I've highlighted in the blue circle, and again, it provides access from the Folsom Heights subdivision east to the intersection of Stonebar Drive and Prima Drive in Eldorado Hills. I wanted to give you a little bit of background, it's the history regarding the Prima Drive Extension and the roadway. An access easement was recorded for that property back in 2000, which provided not only utilities within the easement, but also provided for access within the easement. The easement itself ranges from 60 feet to 80 feet in width, and I'll share a graphic with you shortly that shows the location of that particular easement. A year later, the Stonebar Unit Number Two subdivision map was recorded, and that's the subdivision located to the north and to the east of the Prima Drive Extension. Shortly thereafter, the improvements for the Stonebar Unit Number Two subdivision commenced. As part of those improvements, Stonebar Drive was constructed, as well as Prima Drive. What's important to note, as part of those improvements, Prima Drive was left striped, a pocket was created for a left-turn movement on Prima Drive at Stonebar Drive, and again, I'll share a graphic with you shortly that shows the striping of that particular movement. Shortly after the construction of the subdivision commenced, in 2006, the Eldorado Hills Fire Department provided a letter to Sacramento County regarding a proposed project on the county line, and within that letter, the Eldorado Hills Fire Department expressed a desire to have multiple points of connection between Eldorado County and Sacramento County, and that attachment is included with your staff work this evening. Moving forward to 2011, the Folsom Plan area, specific plan was approved. Moving forward to 2014 to 2016, sometime within that timeframe, that left-turn pocket, which I referenced previously, was, was removed, and the striping was removed. In 2016, a general plan amendment and a specific plan amendment was approved for the Folsom Heights subdivision project. A year later, the Folsom Heights subdivision was approved, as I noted at the beginning of this presentation. So, this is an aerial photograph from 2002, and what this shows is you see the left-turn pocket that was painted on the northbound approach to the intersection of Stonebar Drive and Prima Drive. You'll also note the improvements in the stubouts that were constructed, sidewalks, curbs, gutters, as well as the street. And again, this is a photograph from 2002.
So, just, just a, it is, I was just going to say that, too. So, yeah, that's, that's, I think that's much more recent than 2002, but, but, my question quickly, Steve, is what, so, we talked about the 27-foot width road that is, you know, kind of on the books now, so to speak, as far as where we're at. What is the width of that stubout right there? Is that, do we know that?
I've, I've walked, I think it's more than 27 feet.
Okay, I, I'm trying to get an idea scope here, so, thanks.
So, these are photographs, the top photograph is from April 18, 2014, and again, we still see the left-turn pocket that was striped at this location, and then again, at some point thereafter, the, the striping has been removed, and again, we don't, we don't know the reason for that striping.
My understanding wasn't removed, that they, they resurfaced or sealed the street and was, what happened?
Subsequent to the city council meetings in July, city staff has been meeting on a fairly regular basis, and we've been looking at the operational characteristics of the Prima Drive Extension. As part of that analysis, we looked at the roadway design, we looked at the operation of the roadway, we take a look at the previous traffic studies that were approved or reviewed for the Folsom Heights subdivision project, we looked at the noise impact analysis that was prepared for the Folsom Heights subdivision, and lastly, we took a look at visual impacts based on comments from, from neighbors. This is an aerial photograph showing the approximate location of the Prima Drive Extension. Again, we have a, an easement that has been recorded in 2000. The easement varies from 60 feet in width towards the west, and at the bottom of the hill, it winds out to approximately 80 feet in width, and this would be the approximate location of the Prima Drive Extension. Per council direction, this is a diagram showing the design of the roadway at two different locations. Per council direction, we've limited the roadway width to 27 feet, so we have two 13-and-a-half-foot travel lanes. Outside of that area, we also have foot, one foot and a half curbs and gutters, and then we have four-foot sidewalks on both sides of the street. So, again, this is per city council direction at the July 11 city council meeting. In terms of roadway operation, staff engaged the fire department, as well as the police department, and evaluated Prima Drive in terms of, should it be an emergency vehicle access road, or is it more appropriate to be a full-access public roadway? A primary concern to staff was response times, and providing response times, not only to residents of Folsom, but to residents of Eldorado Hills and vice versa. So, that was one of the key factors we looked at in looking at the, the two options. One thing I pointed, wanted to point out is Prima Drive, for the first phase of the Folsom Heights subdivision project, will be the primary access to the subdivision, and the city, in, to my mind, has not approved any subdivision or other projects where the primary access is an emergency vehicle access road. I think that's important to point out. We also looked at the overall circulation patterns, not only within Folsom, but within Eldorado Hills, and it's our opinion that a full-access roadway would provide better overall circulation within the city, as well as within the, the county areas. We looked at street design, we looked at if it were an EVA, what types of obstructions could there be, gates, bollards? In the end, we determined any type of instruct, obstruction would limit response times and delay emergency responders going either to Folsom or to Eldorado Hills into residents in those areas. We considered existing and future fire stations. Currently, the closest fire station to the Folsom Heights subdivision project is located in Eldorado Hills, it's a little over two miles away, and it will provide, this product, the Folsom Heights subdivision project is in the Eldorado Hills Fire District, and will provide an initial response to this area. The Folsom Plan area will have a fire station, the timing of that is not known currently. It will not occur until after the 1500th building permit, so it could be anywhere between three and five years before that fire station is completed. We also did look at cut-through traffic, as that's been a pretty common topic recently in the community, and I'll share some numbers with you shortly regarding that topic. Four traffic studies have been prepared for the project and the surrounding areas over the course of the years. Most recently, there was a study prepared specifically to look at the impacts to Eldorado Hills, to two intersections within Eldorado Hills. The study looked at Stonebar Drive and Prima Drive. It also looked at White Rock Road and Stonebar Drive. In addition, the study looked at two segments of road on White Rock Road per county request. The study, and the information I'm sharing with you this evening is that we're looking at the cumulative plus project conditions, so, that assumes south of 50 improvements are completed, the project's completed, and under that scenario, and we're looking at a time horizon of 2035 for those, for those figures, the number of vehicles going through the intersection of Stonebar Drive and Prima Drive are expected to be 95 trips in the AM peak hour. Of those trips, 30 are expected to be going inbound from Eldorado Hills into Folsom, with 65 going from Folsom out into Eldorado Hills in the morning. In the evening, in the PM peak hour, under these conditions, there'll be a slight increase in the number of trips, up to 113, which interesting to note is the direction of those trips changes. We have 64 people traveling from Eldorado Hills into Folsom, and a lower amount, 49 going from, from Folsom up into Eldorado Hills.
This is at build-out in 2035?
This is in 2035. It's probably not quite built-out for the plan area, but, but pretty close.
What is it, as far as build-out?
I'm sorry?
It's like for the rest of the area, not just Folsom Heights, but build-out estimates for the rest of the area?
This assumes the build-up of a number of projects, not only locally within Folsom, but within the region. It took into account the vehicle trips associated with many projects within Folsom and the surrounding areas. The traffic study concluded there would be no impact to level of service at the Stonebrier Prima Drive intersection, and that level, level service, we level of service to pay.
Hold on, let's finish that for you folks, I'll have your opportunity to address, so, so, please be patient.
An acoustical analysis was prepared for the Folsom Heights subdivision project, that's included in your packet this evening, and it specifically looked at noises generated by traffic on the Prima Drive Extension, and those impacts to nearby residential uses. The analysis determined that the exterior noise levels, that's in the backyard areas for the residents that's closest to the Prima Drive Extension, would range from 43 to 48 DBA. The city's standard is 60, so it's well within the city's standard for exterior noise levels. Extrapolating out, looking at interior noise levels, that number drops down to 33 to 38 DBA, again, within the 45 DA, DBA, which is the city's standard, and this is not taking into account any screening, screening measures, which are required of the project, such as walls, landscaping, those types of features, which would most likely reduce those noise levels even further. In terms of visual impacts, this was an important topic of residents. This is a graphic showing the grade differential between residents to, to the north and the Prima Drive Extension to the south. These grades vary from the top to the east. We have a elevation difference of anywhere between 5 and 15 feet between the centerline of Prima Drive and the nearest single-family residents. As we move down the hill, we have differences between 10 and 21 feet at this location, and 21 feet in grade change between this property and the centerline of Prima Drive.
Steve, while you're on that slide, what's the linear feet, if you will, between the roadway and the closest...
That's my next slide I was going to share with you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was double numbers there.
And so, there's our graphic showing the distance between property, not the house, but the property line, the approximate distance between property line and the centerline of the Prima Drive Extension. Lastly, I've got to share some photographs with you. This is a view looking south. Again, the roadway would be down in this location, and you can see the development that's going on currently south of the project. It's a subdivision being constructed by CalAtlantic Homes. This is a view looking south, southwest, again, with a future roadway down in this area, and then again, the CalAtlantic Homes being constructed further to the south. And lastly, finishing with some sight photographs, this is a view looking west, and here, here's our stubout of Prima Drive, which I referenced earlier. This is a view looking the opposite direction, looking east towards Prima Drive and the Stonebrier intersection. This is a view looking south from the centerline of the Prima Drive Extension.
Those houses are CalAtlantic?
This is CalAtlantic currently being constructed, yes. And this is a view looking the opposite direction. Again, this is one, just one point on the Prima Drive Extension, just to give you a sense of the, of the situation in the area. Staff does recommend that the council move forward with Prima Drive being constructed as a full-access public roadway, consistent with the conditions of approval that you placed on the project on July 11. And as I mentioned, that includes limiting the roadway to 27 feet in width, screening the roadway with a combination of landscaping and other materials, and lastly, prohibiting construction traffic from using Prima Drive. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
And within that recommendation, you're also saying, because we're doing 27, there's no, no bicycle lane and no parking?
That's a, that's a great point. There will be no bicycle lanes, and there will be no on-street parking permitted.
Because we normally do wider than that to accommodate that, okay.
Correct.
Anything inherent, maybe I missed it, but on emergency response times, so what's the variance between having a full-access road versus an EVA?
It, it's, maybe the fire chief can speak to that, but it, it varies. We can't pinpoint a specific number of, of seconds or minutes, but it was, it was going to be longer than an unobstructed public roadway, certainly.
Don't we have the same problem in every gated community in the city? Potential, if you have a gate, the concern is, is the gate opening properly so the truck can go through? We have gated communities in this...
We do have gated communities.
And why would we have a concern that there's going to be a difference there versus what we have to put up with here?
Well, the difference here would be, we would have two gates, we'd have to have a gate at each end of the roadway. And usually, in a gated subdivision, you have one, one gate providing access to a subdivision, or two gates a different, it's one gate to go through.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I might, there's another significant difference, and that is gated communities are private facilities, so anything in board of the gate is private property, whereas this is a public roadway, there's, there's been no proposals to make either Prima Drive a, a private roadway, or the Folsom Heights subdivision a private gated development.
Yeah, but I don't see where that affects the time, the timing. I mean, it may affect the cost or whatever to maintain and, and all that, but how does it affect the gate opening or closing?
As a public roadway, everyone has access to the public roadway. As a private facility, you have to be a member of the community to gain access to the gate. As a public roadway, every member of the public has a right to pass through, and that's why roadways aren't, public roadways aren't gated.
This is my night to be dense, because I don't understand that logic at all.
Let me throw, let me throw in another little tidbit as well. This is the only fire station within a reasonable distance, whereas in Folsom, including our gated communities, in our service delivery plans, which we have approved and just, again, re-acknowledged as a city council, within those concentric circles, we have at least two fire stations to service every location in the city. This only has one. There's a huge difference, Pete, now, that's a big difference between a gated community, like the manager said, versus a public roadway. It'd be a whole different story once the fire station in Folsom gets constructed, then a reconfiguration could certainly be addressed and/or even looked at, where an EVA would be a little bit more reasonable. But as a public access roadway for only one fire station to accommodate in a reasonable amount of time, that's what, that's the big difference, number one. Number two, Roger, to your question, I can tell you, everyone always assumes that the fire engine is in the fire station. That engine could be in a different district, that engine could be out simply getting their meals for the day, they could already be on another call, so every delay is critical, because the fires, a fire engine can't always be assumed it's in the station.
I absolutely agree with that. I think if we're going to do impact studies on traffic and noise and dB, in decibels, we should have some sort of report on response time. So, I, I asked several folks within, and I've gotten a couple of different responses, but the majority of the folks said it wouldn't make that much of, or it wouldn't, they don't, it wasn't like an actual definitive answer if it would add on time or not. So, my question is, does traffic, as it is pretty heavily now, does that mitigate the road versus a dedicated emergency access point? emergency access point? That's my question. And I can't make a rational decision on this, because that's not in this report. I just don't know.
We have the fire chief in the room, I believe.
Well, that's, and Mr. Mayor, if I might, one of the reasons why this is perhaps a little bit more difficult than some projects that we commonly see is because this particular development, and we talked about this the last time, is within Eldorado Hills Fire Protection District's service boundaries. So, and as a result, they are the primary fire service provider to this particular development on both sides of the county line, both in Eldorado County and in the city of Folsom. And so our position there is, as Councilmember Michaelis pointed out, there are so many reasons in the world, none of which are in our control, that might delay fire response time. Our position on this was those delays that we do have control over, we should eliminate. And that's why the recommendation comes along for a full-access roadway. This is, we are facilitating the emergency response to this particular neighborhood by the service provider, who is legally bound to provide that service, which is Eldorado Hills Fire. They're a good partner of ours, and we're trying to make their job as easy as it can be under difficult emergency circumstances.
Public safety is my number one concern in this position especially. So I have no doubt in my mind that I'll make the decision to do anything I can to help facilitate emergency response and first responders get to residents. But there's nothing in here that says that it would be one way or the other. And to me, logic would assume that, given the traffic and it's in boarding with 10,000 homes in that area, having a dedicated emergency access route for first responders would be the better choice. But I just don't know, because...
Well, you have to assume that, again, let's assume just for a minute, and the creed analytics that you're asking for is extremely difficult at best, because, again, there's so many variables that, let's just assume, just to make it easy, that the engine is in quarters, and they get a call, and they absolutely have no obstructions whatsoever to go from point A to point B. Then you can measure that.
But you're saying there's no obstruction. But when you have a dedicated emergency access road, you know what the obstruction is.
Well, okay, so I'm getting that. I'm getting to your point. My point being is that your route from the fire station through Prima Drive, Stonebrier, whatever, Stonebrier is already constructed. So to construct a dedicated emergency access is almost physically impossible, because the homes are already there, the streets are already there, the restrictions are already there. So to bring that engine in, the engine's gonna find the fastest way to get from point A to point B. What they don't control is maybe someone is, say, having a celebration in any neighborhood, whether it be Folsom or Eldorado Hills, and they have a little too many cars in the street, that engine sometimes can't get through. Because at a minimum, an engine will have feet wide with everything that's on it. Can't get through. So then they have to reroute themselves. Or they're coming from a different area. Maybe they're coming from a closer area, they go through an intersection, and maybe there's some delays there. The point is, I hear what you're saying, but at any given time, it's almost impossible to say on a regular basis, from point A in the fire station to point B to the intersection of Stonebrier and Prima Drive, it would almost be impossible to say consistently they'll be there within three minutes, four minutes, five minutes, because there's a whole bunch of other things. But to your point...
You're taking out that chunk of impossibles and giving a possible timeframe, because you control that area.
But you don't control them going from point A to point B. And then when you get to the obstruction, which is the gate, what if there's a failure in the electronics? What if there's some sabotage within electronics? And that's happened before, all over our jurisdiction and others as well. You don't control those.
I'd say that's far rarer than traffic, though. My biggest issue is traffic. I mean, honestly, I don't know.
I don't disagree.
Yeah.
Yeah. So having said that, that is why that needs to be a full access, is because you gotta allow the safety services to get to where they need to get without creating any additional obstructions, because they don't control the traffic. That's one of many things that they have endured when they come through.
I feel like you're proving my point, is they can't...
Yeah.
Respectfully.
Exactly, I'm proving your point. That's why you can't create any more delays.
Every city staff report we get is chock full of everything, all the details.
Excuse me with the audience, please. It'll be your time.
Yeah.
So I hear what you're saying. But as I said, you're asking for analytics in a black-and-white engineering-type format. And if I've said it wrong, I'm not trying to be disparaging.
No, no, I get it.
It's, again, from living in that environment, it's impossible, because there's so many things that delay. So I've always said, why add another delay? If it's 15 seconds longer from the perfect storm, if you will, if it's 30 seconds longer from the perfect storm, every single delay, every single second, makes a difference. And so you don't control the traffic. If there's more, there's gonna be traffic there. I'll give you another example. We look at the cut through from Wilson Drive to Empire Ranch Road. We all discussed it when we looked at the presentation a couple of weeks ago. Okay? Our safety services have to deal with that traffic. They still have to get through Eldorado Hills to support our neighbors to the east, and they have to come in that same way to support us. We can't put a finite timeline on that. They have to deal with that to deal with, because of the fluctuations in the traffic patterns. In this case, most of that traffic that's delaying the safety service happens to be coming from Eldorado Hills, not from us. We live that. We address it, and we understand it. And that's why mutual aid between the two agencies figures it out. I hear what you're saying. At total buildout, to me, that's a whole different animal, because now we have a fire station down there.
Well, see, we're envisioning...
Talking 25 to 30 years on a total buildout.
That's what I'm saying. So that's my point, is that I'm looking at this ahead of time, and not necessarily, you know, I'm looking at how many residents and what they're gonna have to deal with at that point, versus an open space right now that has 500 homes planned in the next five years. See what I'm saying? So to your point, we can't control traffic, but we can control a large plot of road that has egress emergency access points that are, everyone is used to. It's code lights that blink, and they open. I mean, there's several solutions for it. But I think, to me, and maybe we're just agreeing to disagree, but I just feel like, number one, we don't have the right data to say it's faster or not faster to make this point, to make this decision.
Actually, we do. And that was the fire chiefs' one, their testimony, plus what was in the staff reports from the previous things.
And just to add to that, if we've got the fire chiefs...
Excuse me, Kerry. To your point, Roger, I don't, but I hear both sides. We gotta deal with the today and now, servicing both communities, just like we're dealing with the today and now, whether it be us or Eldorado Hills and the other access points that we share. And then as things progress, I absolutely don't disagree with you, because now we'll have a fire station down there. We might have new circulation plans. That, as I just said a little bit ago, just not even five minutes ago, at that point in time, we could look at a reconfiguration and turn it into an EVA, because then we do have primary accesses. But for today, and looking at a snapshot today, and the requirement of the fire district that controls that area, and I've said it for many times, I don't even know why we're discussing this, when the fire district that controls the area is the ultimate governmental agency, says, this is what you can put in.
That's the thing, is because it's our road.
Well, it doesn't matter. It's our road in their jurisdiction that was agreed to back in 2000. So I hear what you're saying. So I see it as two-pronged. Immediate today, and as it grows out, we reconfigure as it grows out to put in that EVA, because we have more primary access, and we have better response times from the stations that are in the area. I don't look at this as perpetuity for these folks or anybody, either side.
Wait a minute.
So just so everybody's aware, I do have about 16 requests to speak on this. So, you know...
Can we come back afterwards?
Oh, absolutely. I'm just, I'm just, it's up to you, Ernie, if you wanna ask more questions.
No, I'm just thinking, in my mind, I'm thinking that whatever you run into is all hypothetical, till you get to that access, be it a gated community or this community. Okay? So it's, what's the difference between a gated community and that ungated community, in other words, unrestricted access? I can't see a big problem there, as far as trying to not make it a, you know, I'll wait a year more. Maybe I'll understand it later. I just don't see it.
Okay. So any other questions, comments from council members for Steve?
Yes.
We've, we're having an argument, and I appreciate Steve's experience in the fire service. But when we have both fire chiefs here, I'd like to hear from them. I think they're the only people that can reasonably answer this question about what, whether there is or is not a delay with the presence of a gate. And I'd like to hear what they both have to say.
All right. So we do have, so...
Aren't they gonna be as hypothetical as we? How do they know there's gonna be a delay? If it works right, there's no delay.
Thanks, Ernie, but I'd like to hear from the fire chiefs.
Yeah, of course.
So we'll just capture a little more information here. And I think we're up to... Good evening.
Honorable Mayor and City Council Members, I'm Felipe Rodriguez. I'm your fire chief. And I'll introduce to you Eldorado Hills Fire Chief Dave Roberts.
Thanks, sir. Thanks for being here this evening. So your question, Kerry?
So the question is, how much of a delay, in your professional opinions, does the presence of a gate cause at that location? For equipment that, in the early stages, when the first 130 houses are built, fire service is likely gonna come from Eldorado Hills, until there's a fire station on the Folsom side of the county line.
Okay. I'll answer that initially, and then I'll allow Fire Chief from Eldorado Hills to answer if he has a difference in opinion on it. I anticipate each gate itself will be somewhere between 45 seconds to one minute from the time you slow down, activate it. In different ways, we can activate it. For it to completely open and for us to proceed back through, that total timeframe will be about 45 seconds to a minute to accelerate back to a position where you were originally approaching that intersection at each location.
Okay.
Agreed.
Okay.
Thank you.
And something you gotta keep in mind, too, is that while you guys and the Eldorado Hills planners build beautiful communities, I gotta hand it to you, they're awesome. Remember that for us, response times, it's nice in a city where you have flat, straight, gridded road patterns, where you have multiple ways to get in and out of multiple areas. There's, it's hard to find a straight, flat road in Eldorado Hills, or really in Folsom. Everything's got curves to it. Everything's uphill or downhill. Those add significant challenges to response times as it is. Any other barriers that increase those challenges to us, we're kind of always against those, so.
All right, great. Any other questions for the fire chiefs?
Yeah, I am, but I'm not gonna debate it right now. There's a different factor. Is there a monetary factor for you to have the control over this area?
So we've had the 200 acres at the top of the hill really surrounded, the radio towers for years, that nobody else could get to. So we basically had that for a long, long, long time, where we protected that area before I started, which was over 30 years ago. When Folsom annexed that piece of the pie, because of the LAFCO agreements that had to happen and everything else, we worked a deal to, for us to continue to protect that area in perpetuity, basically. So, yes. And we will be, until the fire station gets built out there, we'll be the first in. It's about a three-minute response time to that roadway at this point in time from our Station 87 out there.
But don't you still have to be the primary response, other than if you don't have the engine, in order to justify the compensation monetary that you get? Because you're a organization that, two communities, you service two counties. And because of that, you're compensated for that. And I'm not saying it's not justified, but you are.
Yes.
But in order to keep that compensation coming, you have to do it.
Right. And we have, for many, 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 many years.
And you won't stop, because that's not gonna go away.
Ernie, I think...
Can you explain the mutual aid thing?
The distinction that's being missed here is, in order for that tax benefit that was done way before you and I even were brought in this area, it has to do with the service territory. As an example, we're a water service territory all the way down past Aerojet and Sunrise and whatever. As long as it's in our service territory, we are the controller. It's in their service territory, whether it's primary, secondary, mutually, whatever. It's their primary access. Doesn't mean they have to be the first one in. It's their service territory. So that's how that works. So it's not who's first in. It's whose service territory is it. And by mutual aid, we don't care what the boundaries are. Whoever can get there the fastest.
No, that's correct, yeah.
So that's, well, I'm only saying that because, again, it solidifies its service territory, not primary, first one in.
Years ago, to serve both of our residents better, we dropped our boundaries, and that really makes no difference to us. The closest engine is always the one that goes. And that's what our goal is always to be, so that you guys get serviced, the people that call 911 get serviced as fast as possible.
So Chief, if I may, because you said something that actually might help with Roger's question. So you said, if engine was in quarters at 87s, and you got dispatched to, I'm gonna assume the intersection of Stonebrier and Prima Drive, in a perfect setting with no delays, no traffic, no nothing, that's three minutes just to get there.
Yes.
And then I heard both of you agree, saying that with a gate, you're adding another 45 seconds to one minute just to get through the gate, and then you gotta re-accelerate on top of that.
Correct, yeah.
So my point being is, you're four minutes before you get through the gate in a perfect scenario.
Yes, in a perfect scenario.
From the station, if you're in quarters in the station.
That is correct, yeah. We're not driving sports cars. We're driving 35,000 to 65,000-pound trucks that take a long time to get rolling.
Chief Rodriguez, from the closest location in Folsom to get to that site, what would the time be to get there, from the existing fire station?
Okay, so we're at 78 Clarksville Road, right by Home Depot. The thing to really bring forth is that there is no back access at this time. We would have to drive all the way up Placerville Road to White Rock Road, all the way to Stonebrier, and back around to access this subdivision. There's only, this is the primary access that we're talking about.
So what do you think that time would be?
We're looking at eight to 10 minutes, probably. Probably eight minutes, a good eight minutes, just to get to that location. If we have gates, I'm figuring about 45 seconds. I mean, I've timed it through gates, about 45 seconds. Worst-case scenario would be one minute, but about 45 to full acceleration each one, so add a minute and a half on that.
Okay. And then, once, moving forward five years, or whatever the timeline is, for the first station located in the plan area, what would you anticipate the response time to be then?
We'll be within, I believe we calculated about a mile and a half away. So we'll probably be right around that same three-minute mark.
Okay.
It'll be pretty much a tie. So whoever's the closest, whoever's in quarters will go, depending upon what area of the subdivision, will be first in. Eldorado Hills or us will work together, as we do. We've been working together for years. And, but the big point is that there is gonna only be one access point that's an emergency access at this time. And that'll be off of Prima Drive. Until Alder Creek is constructed all the way through the backside, we will not have, we will not have any other access at this point. So I would ask you to, you know, please consider that with your decision, to allow us to provide the best service to our community and to their community, depending upon who's in quarters and who's available.
So could I ask one question also? The amount of time when you guys roll truck or roll, I don't know what you call it, code or whatever, but how often do you incur traffic? And what's that delay during your calls?
Depending upon the time of day, yeah, that does change. On Bidwell, as you know, it's a little crowded at this point. So driving down, you know, definitely from our fire station on Clarksville Road, driving down Bidwell through all of those intersections, and then all the way down to White Rock Road, it does add quite a bit of additional time during the middle of the day, mornings and evenings specifically.
Okay.
One additional thing, if I might add. I've been on many strike team assignments up and down California. I just returned last weekend from our unfortunate fire season that we just ended here, or trying to end, anyway. And, you know, not only from the fire department's perspective, but from the resident's perspective, you can't have too many ways in and out of a subdivision. You just can't. We saw a lot of loss of life because of the fact that people were limited to a very small, narrow, one-way-in, one-way-out access. And that has to be considered as well. So you really can't have too many ways in and out of an area for the safety of the people, not only us getting into them, but them getting out if they need to.
Great. Any other questions for fire chiefs? Thanks, thanks.
We'll be here in the back if there's any other questions.
Okay. So any other questions, comments before I... Okay. So we have, we have about 20 requests to speak. So we typically do the three minutes per person, and we certainly have time to accommodate the 20 three minutes. So we will go ahead and announce the first couple of speakers here.
First speaker will be Steve Minzer, followed by Joyce Metzger.
Okay, yeah, right there. Yes, perfect. Good evening, Steve.
Thanks for hearing us out and everything. And a couple of the things that I've heard, and the only reason I'm here is, you know, I know you look at a pretty big crowd, you know, that's representing the neighborhood. But I'm here as one person, but I'm really representing four, because, you know, people have jobs, and they also have family obligations. So three of my friends and my wife told me, you know, hey, you need to go there. But it's, you know, the first game of the World Series. I'd sure rather be there.
Yeah, that was bad timing in our part, wasn't it?
I tried to get it on Sling TV, $24, I still couldn't download it. So just know this is really important. But some of the things that I've heard as far as, you know, you know, access through the road and, you know, emergency response times, I'm not sure that people have actually gone out to that site, because I don't think you're getting the whole picture. Exactly almost equidistant from the corner of White Rock and Prima Drive, or Stonebrier Drive coming in, if you look directly across from that intersection, there's four seasons. And that's a senior, you know, planned community, and it has two gates. And so the fire chief's accessing that right now, and I'm sure that the number of responses, just because of the age of the individuals that live there and stuff, is probably of higher, you know, concentration than would be, you know, the average population with kids and... the average population with kids and such, and I mean, I totally, you know, extrapolate that as, you know, my personal opinion, so I don't know the facts behind that, but I do know that they are accessing that, and that's how they get in and out of Four Seasons. So, you know, I understand, you know, I did a little quick research. I didn't know that, you know, we were talking twenty-eight feet, thirty feet wide road. I thought we were talking something like sixteen feet, and so before I came, I'm like, well, I don't want to come there with a problem, I want to come with a solution. So, I went on Google, and I looked up gate.com or something, and I've got the, you know, the thing, and I thought like a sixteen-foot gate, you know, would be like a big deal, and they have a bunch of different types, you know, they would open the gates automatically for emergency vehicles, and it was like twenty-five hundred dollars. And you could have, you know, one of the best automatic gate-opening things. So, you know, and as far as the fire trucks, you know, speeding up and, you know, and you're breaking their flow, and they'd have to ramp up speed, you'd be coming off of White Rock, you'd make a ninety-degree, and then you'd make another ninety-degree, all within about, I don't know, maybe three hundred yards? So, you know, the speeding up, slowing down, and how that's going to impact getting through that area, I don't think you guys are hearing the straight story about what exactly that road is, and then how they would have to access it, so they're not going to be going fifty-five and then making a right turn, and then making a left turn, all within, you know, three hundred yards, and then accessing that would be a gate or that road. So, the speed isn't going to be, you know, changing as dramatic as what the guys are telling you. So, again, I don't want to take too much time, but.
Got ten seconds.
Okay, so the whole point is, they're already doing it, and I don't think that unless you've been out there and seen the actual property, that you're getting the whole picture of what people are telling you here.
Okay, great.
I can tell you, Mr. Mayor, as people come up, I've been out there at least a half a dozen to a dozen times, so.
Yeah, I think.
I have been out there and infinite them to where I know every square inch of that area.
And you looked directly across from that road in Four Seasons.
Been all over that place, and again, being as an experienced fireman, I will respectfully disagree with you, the difference is, when they come up there, they have to stop. There's a difference in accelerating and decelerating, right turns, left turns, whatever. You're always assuming they're going to come that direction, they're going to come whatever is the quickest way to get to you folks, from where they're coming from.
And.
No, that, hold on.
It's all due respect.
Yeah, please, please.
I'm not interrupting you, I'm having a dialogue with this gentleman, and he said some things that's not entirely accurate, because when they get to the gate, they're not accessing the gate from down at White Rock and Stonebrier, they're accessing when they get to Stonebrier and Prima in order to access that thing. They have to stop until that gate opens, that's what they're talking about.
Okay, and so my point still stands, directly across from that corner is a gate accessing Four Seasons and doing exactly what we're talking about, and so I would.
Difference being, there's two access points, not one. That's what he's trying to tell you, and there's also, there's a whole different configuration that you and I could spend hours offline debating this if you want, but I'm not going to. But I just want to let you know that I think the majority of the council members have been out there many, many, many times, so I didn't want the public to think we haven't been out there, because part of our job, and before I make a decision, for me personally, including when I was a planning commissioner before we even got to this position, I walk every property that I look at. I've been out there plenty of times.
And the point still stands, they're accessing it through that front gate. I watch the, I watch the fire trucks do it on a frequent basis.
So, out of respect for time, let's.
Yeah, thank you.
So, thanks. Okay, next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Joyce Metzger, then Frank Dobrowski.
Okay, good evening, Joyce.
Hi, good evening, thank you so much for taking the time to let me speak. First of all, I want to say that this is the last place I wanted to be tonight, and at the same time, the most important. I wrote out my notes, so. Over the last several months, I've sat back and watched city politics at work, and it has not been fun. I was present at several meetings in which the Stonebrier neighborhood was made aware of the Prima Road extension and told it was a done deal. No one that I knew of was aware of the impending changes that had apparently been in the works for a while. My neighbors and I stood and voiced our concerns. The next night, we returned to the actual council meeting. The wind was taken out of our sails when the builder and the city agreed to make Prima Road an emergency vehicle access road only. We want to be reasonable, that was a change that we could all live with. One neighbor couple stood and asked for a promise that the EVA would not be changed back to a full road access after a sundown period, and we were told that it would not. The part where politics stinks happened at the very next Folsom City Council meeting, when the vote was reversed. No one from our neighborhood was there to argue the point, as we took Folsom at its word when they said they wanted to be good neighbors. The problem had seemingly been handled, we believed. As one of my neighbors pointed out, the staff report recently that was published does not mention the June seventh unanimous decision by the Folsom Planning Commission to approve modifying Condition 174. Again, politics that looks bad to the average person. My main points are safety-related. At one of the meetings, an EDH fire official spoke and mentioned that our subdivision, being built by today's standards with only one way in and one way out, would not be acceptable. It would not be allowed. Stonebrier is a community with over four hundred homes with only one way in and one way out, that being Stonebrier Drive. Should this extension be built, there will be two roadways converging on a downhill slope. Despite whatever traffic surveys have been made, the traffic on Stonebrier Drive already exceeds the speed limit on a regular basis, and the stop sign is routinely run. I would like city officials and traffic personnel to come by without their official cars and their orange vests, stand on the corner, the story will look quite a bit different. Add another roadway with the same statistics, a downhill slope and a stop sign, and the outcome is predictable. Predictable is preventable. It's not a question of if, but when. Any accident will become a bottleneck. Did I mention that there's only one way in and one way out? A major accident will block the entire roadway and hold the entire neighborhood captive. Factor in a heart attack or a drowning child in our neighborhood, and that bottleneck is now a life-threatening issue. Stonebrier and Prima Road is currently a school bus stop. My daughter walks to that intersection along with several other students now at six-twenty AM. That's currently in pitch-black conditions. Considering for the higher potential for an accident, our children are at a higher level of danger as well. Lastly, only two weeks ago, the unimaginable happened in Napa with a firestorm that was unprecedented. The fires did not just take out open fields and do some damage to some buildings. Entire neighborhoods are gone, not damaged, gone, along with a horrific loss of life. What are the odds that'll happen here, who knows? What I do know is that we have a community of over four hundred families. We need emergency vehicle access to be able to come to the back of our community quickly. All my life, I've heard, follow the money. I can't believe that the future of Folsom's development hinges on one roadway. I do believe that the building developers have a lot at stake, and this roadway is important to them. When all is said and done, and the contractor is on to the next job site, it will be the City of Folsom who will have to stand behind its decision and the certain litigation when the preventable or unimaginable happens in Stonebrier. Given all the concerns that my neighbors and I have voiced over the last several months, we ask that you be good neighbors and vote for the emergency vehicle access road. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Joyce. So, our next speaker, and I have a question, I don't know who can answer this. It's got to be somebody who's familiar with the neighborhood up there, because I've been right at that, that Prima-Stonebrier interchange there, but it looked like from maps, there's a street called Manchester that comes out to White Rock Road.
That's a gate, huh?
Okay, a gate, all right. That's what, that's what I thought the answer was going to be, thank you.
Can we leave in gates now?
Okay. All right, so with that, next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Derek Metzger, then Frank Dobrowski.
All right, good evening, Frank.
I'm sorry.
Derek Metzger, then Frank.
Oh, Derek, oh, I'm sorry.
I missed it last time, I think.
Okay, so this is Derek?
Yes, thank you.
Very good, evening, Derek, sorry about that.
Thank you, you just heard my lovely wife speak, so I'll try and be very bullet-pointed, she's a better speaker than I am. So, thank you, Councilman and Mayor, for listening to us. I come to talk to you as a resident, a father, and a police officer for eighteen years, okay? I say that only to bring some measure of experience to what I have to say. So I'll try and make this very brief. This is not just a roadway we're talking about. This has a lot of impact in a lot of different areas, as you are all aware, and as our community is aware, not only now, as Mr. Michaelis pointed out, but.
Steve.
Steve. But for years to come, decades to come, this is a, an impactful thing. Everybody's going to talk about the traffic concerns and the traffic impacts that we have. Two downhill streets are going to meet there at that intersection, okay? I've been a law enforcement officer for eighteen years, I've been to thousands of collisions, okay? That environmental design for those two roads is going to be a problem. It is going to create people running through that light, or running through that stop sign. I've stood on that corner, as have you, and I've looked and see there are sight limits to people coming out of Stonebrier towards White Rock, if you're in that proposed area, because there's a large hillside there for that resident. It does limit the viewpoint, not only for the people coming down, who are regularly at thirty-five miles an hour at minimum, okay? But also the people that are going to come down from the Folsom Heights area. My wife said it, it is a mantra in public safety, predictable is preventable, okay? And this is a prediction that you will have an increased number of accidents, an increased number of calls for service that will respond there, tying up fire resources, tiring up police resources. The one thing we have yet to hear in these meetings that I've been to is what is the law enforcement response to this? I myself have spent a long time responding to calls for service. If you put a full-access roadway leaving the Folsom area, and a crime occurs in the Folsom Heights area, and they have this access into El Dorado County, you will experience, or, and we will experience, delays in the response of law enforcement officials to be able to get to those calls, because Folsom will receive the call, but then they will have to cross-report to El Dorado County and get them to have their deputies respond.
Okay, Derek, got about a few seconds here, so you've got a final thought here for us?
My final thought is, we talk about response times. Response times is a performance measure. It does not give the entire picture of what's going on. As we've heard, there are many layers. The benefits to this roadway are, as an EVA, far outweigh the response times alone.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Derek. Okay, next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Frank Dobrowski, followed by Stephanie Haley.
All right, now we have Frank, good evening, Frank.
Hello, Frank. So, I've been a resident there for the last thirteen years, since we bought, when the subdivision was just starting. Again, nothing was ever said about having, you know, a full-fledged road coming back into that and feeding through our subdivision. You know, traffic is an issue, especially when you've got such a short distance, and now you're going to add an additional five hundred units feeding down through our subdivision, where again, like the ladies were saying, is that we have four hundred houses that are all feeding through one way in, one way out. Now we're going to add another five hundred homes feeding into that same entrance, in and out. I think that, I think that there could be some additional thought given on routing that someplace else, because of the simple fact of the impact to the existing community. And that's about all I have to say.
All right, great, thanks, thanks, Frank, thanks for coming out this evening. Good evening, Stephanie.
Hello, Stephanie Haley, Six Thirty-One Stonebrier Court. Took the time to blow up the pictures from two thousand thirteen, that, the big fire from Highway Fifty from, I don't even know how it all started, maybe a cigarette butt is what I think I hear, but never found out really how that fire started. What I do remember from those pictures is us running, leaving our golden retrievers in the house, and the fire department coming in a timely manner, and you can see that through the pictures, enough time to put that fire out before it got to any of our structures or our wood fencing. So, since June of this year, May thirtieth, actually, I've been petrified for all these decisions we all come to this day. This road, EVA access road, that I've always known it as, since I've lived there for seventeen years, and the last eight years since your general plan, it's been called a EVA road, a main road, a full road, a tentative road, and now it's called a primary access road. So, I don't know what type of road you're trying to, you know, create, but all's I know, it's not going to be a safe one. You're putting our Stonebrier residents into just non-safe living conditions, just from all these talks, what you're hearing. It can be an EVA road, like the planning commission and everyone else was very fine with, we were all comfortable with, so you can build your five hundred homes, not making it a main access, never. It's never been on your agenda to make it a main access road. So why, since June, and these maps, and all of a sudden this main road comes on maps? That map that was presented earlier was not true. Those homes were, that's not the true date of that map. So this issue has only been since June, May, since I saw people measuring in my backyard. So, basically, I'm just asking you to go back to your original plan. Don't hurry the process of the great communities you're planning to build, we're all excited for them, but do it in a safe way, and don't use Stonebrier and our livelihoods to rush it, so get your fire departments set up, ready, don't rush it. There's lies, those five hundred lies you're going to put up there, it's just not a good thing, it's obvious. So, it's too soon for you to do this. Your fire stations are not built, you're going to be using our fire, you know, we're too thin. Why add five hundred more homes when you can't deal with what we have right now? Yes, we want to serve and help and be good neighbors, but boy, it's very, very hard when you're not thinking about our safety and these people in the community that are sitting here. And it's sad, and hopefully you guys will be able to make the right decision and not make this a full road, and keep it EVA like it's been planned for the last eight years, and use your three main accesses off East Bidwell that aren't prepared yet for your homes. Wait, get them done, and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie. All right, next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Tim Haley, then Vin Doe.
Evening, Tim. Good evening.
Good evening. Recent firestorms in Napa, Sonoma and Santa Rosa brought to light some of the problems that I'd like for you to look at here in El Dorado Hills and Folsom. I think it's obvious that they're game changers, because we're talking about a metric of response time, which really isn't the most important metric. Let's talk about evacuation time, because that's exactly what they had to look at in Sonoma, Napa. Basically, what's going to happen here is that response time really shouldn't be primary. We're going to, at some point in time, once the homes are built, going to need, if that fire happens again, and it's already happened once, to be considering evacuation times to get down the hill. The problem is, you'll have tens of thousands of people trying to get out going down Prima Drive at the same time as we're going to need to have emergency access vehicles going up Prima Drive. I see a significant problem there. I see gridlock, I see a situation that is going to be very dangerous for the people in the area. Take that into consideration. Response time's important, but after looking at what happened in Santa Rosa, after looking what happens in Sonoma, evacuation time is something you need to take into consideration, because just response time really isn't the only metric necessary to judge public safety in this situation. This is a recipe for disaster. Prima Drive must be left in EVA. We're going to need it to get emergency vehicles up the hill as you evacuate people out Old Placerville Road. This will occur at some point in time in the future. It's already burned, it's a high-density risk area, it's designated as such. There's been a lot of discussion about planting trees, shrubs, bushes to mitigate sound and whatever else. I was wondering if you could explain to me, please, what is meant by screened specifically? Can anybody help me with that?
When we get to our deliberations, we'll talk.
Yeah, well.
Beg your pardon?
When we get to our deliberations, we'll fill you in.
We'll get an answer to that question for you, okay?
Okay, well, right now, what's been talked about, which drives me nuts, is there's a talk of adding vegetation, combustible materials along the fence line going up Prima Drive. The fence line is old matchstick material, old wood, fifteen years old, high-risk. Now you're going to put next to it, parallel to it, more combustible, and create a fire corridor going up the hill, so then all we need at that point is wind coming up there, and it's going to carry the fire all the way up the hill. And that's something that is likely will happen someday, because it's almost already happened.
Okay, Tim, we're right at three minutes, so if you could give us a final thought there?
Well, I do have one other issue, very quickly, I read the four traffic studies. None of the studies have taken into consideration the thousand senior citizens and their special needs across the street at Four Seasons and how that affects them. There's nothing in there taking that into consideration, and I think that's neglectful. It's disrespectful to the tax-paying citizens living in the Four Seasons. They're not being considered, there are special needs of senior citizens. They're not being considered, there are special needs of senior citizens that need to be looked at, and the council needs to take that into strong consideration. Evacuation time metrics is primary, and also, let's take a look at how these traffic patterns, what special needs we can provide for our senior citizens, the great taxpaying Americans who have paid taxes. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tim. Okay. Next speaker.
Vin Doh. Hello. First of all, I would like to thank Mr. Mayor and all the city council members for this opportunity for our Stonebriar community residents. Having brought up an escape from a communist regime where all the decisions are made by the government without taking any consideration of the well-being and without any vote from the citizens, I certainly appreciate what I am going through today where my voice, as the other voice from the Stonebriar residents, are being heard. I live, I live at the Stonebriar primer intersection for the last 15 years, my house is right at that corner, so I appreciate you, all the city council member, coming out there and check, but I am the data there, I lived there for the last 15 years. Every morning and every evening, my kid walk across the street and all the neighbor kid walk across the street at intersection. Many, many times during my first five years over there, I have to stand out there and watch the car coming down from the hill at that intersection. We raised a concern and for the longest time, a police officer have to station there just to watch the traffic coming down. Now, with the other intersection, now with the other road conversion down from another hill with the existing one, it will be a traffic disaster happen, waiting to happen. So, our kids' safety are at stake. We moved there because we like the, the school district, we like the safety of that environment, and now it's look like, you know, it's not going to be the same. So, there are many statistics that already provide by my fellow Stonebriar residents, so I don't want to take any more time on the numbers and the metrics. I just would like to take the opportunity to voice my strongest opposition to build another full-access road. I would like to strongly recommend that, let's take a look at it from a very simple and, and workable solution. One side want a full access, 400 residents with the safety of our children and the safety of us in mind would like no road. So, as a compromise, I strongly recommend to just stick with an EVA road.
Okay.
Thank you for your time today.
Thanks, thanks Ben. Who we got next here?
Next speaker is Ed McGowan, and then Michelle Meisner.
All right.
Can the developer put up the, in the presentation, the 2003 slide?
Sure, sure, we can, can we get the, Steve, can you get up there and just flip to, I'm not sure exactly which slide he wants up there, so watch the screen here and stop us when you see what you want to see there.
The first one you showed. 2003, keep going.
So, I think it was that.
Not that one. Keep going.
The one before.
Before. No, it's not working.
Do the manual left. So, that there?
Okay.
Okay. All right, good evening Ed.
All right, so, the developer reports this as a 2003 slide. I moved there in 2008, and I put, this is my house here, I put this bungee cord in in 2013, and I put this honey green in in 2014, so this presentation is.
You know, we, we acknowledge that's not the right date for that, so, so yeah, that's.
Well, all the other ones are also incorrectly dated, you know, the presentation is deceitful and manipulative, and so, the developer has present, presented a lot of things that are very manipulative, including all those statistics and statistical anomalies. The noise studies, where did they come from? Nobody did any noise studies from my house, my fence line is 90 feet from the intersection, 170 feet from the proposed new road, the beginning of it, nobody's given me any notices, the city of Folsom hasn't, the developer hasn't, I've never received one single notice about any type of construction at that area. So, remember, everybody says that that thing's going to be the, a primary access. This actual, this is actually three neighborhoods, there's Stonebriar, there's Springfield Meadows off that way, and then the new neighborhood there, all right? They're all going to converge at that one point. Since it's a primary access, that's going to be about 2,100 extra vehicle trips per day, 88 per hour every hour, 88 hours per day, again, another statistical anomaly in his presentation. That's over 14,000 per week, over 64,000 per month, over 771,000 per year, doesn't include any support vehicles. I believe all this traffic has a much greater chance of causing a fatality or injury than a, any type of few-second or couple-minute delay in access there. Also, the access on that road is going to, if it's a full access, it's going to have traffic all the time. So, any delay in having it an EVA with no vehicle traffic on it is probably going to be a lot more dodging vehicles going up that road than having an open road with just a And as was pointed out earlier, any small accident on Stonebriar causes a big, huge blockage for that whole entire road. I think most of the residents here believe that, I acknowledge the property owners' access and easement to this property, even though we probably don't like it, we, we understand it's there, and I think all of them would probably support an EVA, and I don't think any of them would support a full-access road. Let's see. There's, there's a lot of concerns here, I hear every single vehicle that goes through there, and I'm going to hear another 2,000 more, and it's, it's just wrong. It's, it's, it seems like you're putting the cart before the horse, trying to put in a neighborhood and give it an access road that's really not safe and not the right thing to do, whereas the access road should come from Folsom and you should have full access that way.
Okay. Any final thoughts there, Ed? Okay, thanks. Okay, next speaker.
Michelle Meisner, then Sharon Williams.
Hi, Michelle.
Hi, thank you so much for having us back and letting us express our feelings about the access here. Many of my points have already been addressed, so I just made a few quick notes that I, I want you to rehear what was said earlier, and I heard it out of our chief's, the El Dorado Hills Fire Chief's mouth in this room tonight, that when this development was built, if it was built in today's standards, it would not be approved with one access point. That's all we have, one in, one out. So, to put another potential 1,000-plus cars coming through there on a daily basis, that's just, it's just a recipe for disaster. I mean, come on, it's simple math. The Wilson Drive that you used as an example, that is a huge area, there's multiple access points, several roads everywhere coming out onto Wilson, going into Folsom, so they have other ways around. If something happens in our little intersection, we're stuck in the mud, there's no way to get out. I was not home during the fire in 2013, I was out of state, but people had to drive across our park grass to get out because they could not get in and out of our neighborhood because it was closed. So, I mean, I lost, I had $70,000 worth of damage in my backyard because the fire trucks could not get back, or they were actually sent to the wrong area first. But, so, I mean, having 1,000 cars in that intersection potentially, what's the delay time for my emergency access, you know, for my response time, if I have another fire in that field? I mean, my delay is going to be even greater and I'm going to experience loss again. So, to me, I would like to hear how you're going to address the response time to the back of our neighborhood when they're all congested at the front because of the traffic. I mean, it's unfair to us as a neighborhood with a one-access point to put potentially 500 homes with two cars per home coming through our neighborhood into El Dorado Hills instead of using the huge open-access area that you already have roads under development. There's, Alder Creek is already being developed, the, I mean, you have access points that can be sped up in the timeframe to allow access to that area. The road that goes up by the towers, that can be also an, an access point, not our neighborhood. We're a small, little community, we're not part of the huge El Dorado Hills CSD, we're our own little tiny CSD. We can't maintain that with our budget, I don't think. That's pretty much all I want to say.
All right. Thanks, Michelle. Next speaker.
Sharon Williams, then Mike Seo.
All right, Sharon here, Sharon, Sharon Williams? Anybody out in the hall there? Okay, so we'll kind of, if Sharon shows up, we'll get her back in the queue here, so Mike.
Mike Seo.
Mike. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, thank you for hearing me out. I just want to say, a lot of the points have already been made, so I'm not going to be redundant and say it again, but I just want to tell you, all of you, especially Steve, we, my wife and I, bought a brand-new house on the development on the other side right there. My house is actually right here, right by here, and you have a direct view of that intersection.
So, you're in the new, new neighborhood there?
New Calantic Development. It's high up and it has a really nice view, and I'm not going to lie, I'm biased against having a full-access road for personal reasons, but have, listened to all these concerns. I also work as an accident investigator, I investigate car accidents for the last 20 years, and, and I know Steve said that you all have been out there, looked at the intersection, but because we have such a nice view out of our backyard and from upstairs, we sit there at night for hours on end, drink and look at the view. And we look right at that intersection, and I can tell you from looking at it for the past three months that we've been living there, cars coming from the top there, it's a really steep hill, they rarely ever stop at night because they know that there's no patrols there, there's no cops there, they just do a rolling stop, blow through the stop sign there. And that access road that you guys are thinking about making into a full road, it's very hilly as well, it's coming straight down. And what I'd like to ask you guys is to come there at night sometimes, like 10, 11, 12 o'clock, and I can only imagine if that access road is built to a regular road, it's going to be an accident waiting to happen, especially at night, because you're going to have two downhill roads converging down into that intersection, and it's not safe. And if you're worried about response times from the fire trucks or EMS or whatever, if there's an accident there, you can forget about extra 40 seconds or whatever, it's going to be a lot longer. So, I know some of you guys, minds made up, probably not, I'm not going to change your guys' mind, but for the ones that are on the fence, I would like to ask you just reconsider some of my concerns, everybody else's concern here, and maybe just think twice, I mean, is it worth saving 40 seconds in the response time when you have all these other paramount concerns? You have other access points being built on Folsom already, you don't need one right there, you can just leave that as is. Why fix something that's not broken? So, I'd just like to ask you to reconsider it and just leave it the way it is, because it's not broken and you guys have other options, different roads that are being built, so I hope you guys can reconsider it.
Okay, thanks.
And I have one last question, it's now seven seconds.
Yep, you got time.
Old Placerville Road, the part near In-N-Out, when is that going to be finished?
We'll get an answer to that, so, so, Old Placerville Road.
It was East.
Right, yeah, so it's.
Where the In-N-Out Burger is.
Right, right, we'll get you timelines on all that, I was thinking of Scott Road as well, so, so we'll get you an update on, on that scheduling for all those, so, so yes. I'll write that down somewhere. All right, next speaker.
Bill Smith, then Rom K.
My uncle had 100 firemen at the Air Force Base up in Canada, mom's little brother. When he got home, he had kids. He wasn't fooling around, he put fires out everywhere he went. American Rescue Team International, ARTI, Doug Cope, C-O-P-P, was a cop. He was a demolition expert, he came here to deplore buildings unknown themselves. Did you see San Andreas? I saw it just last, few days ago. The timing is impeccable for everything I'm doing. I got a list as long as both arms about saving lives. My little vehicle is going to be small potatoes, and your small potatoes need to get out or else they need to get underground. Conflagration, I was in the middle of 100 people with the conflagration, it's a conflagration, you got your orders a little bit off cue. Other communities need to see what this community can do. My friend designed domes, the Five Pointed Star Dome in Berkeley was his design. Civil engineer, he made an $8 million project, a $2 million project, and they claimed, oh, you're a screw loose pal. He took all the little blocks that the, the shrink gave him and he goes, bit, 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 bit. My buddy from Harvard, I mentored 500 times, he took the cans that went to Chicago and everywhere else, he did Highway 5, all up and down Highway 5, dumpster Dan, hello? Bit, 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 bit. I got super genius of all my life. Now, we need a little moment of silence for Melissa's little brother, straight A's in school, her parents went to Stanford, teachers. Her little brother ran from behind a car, she got blamed for the kid getting hit in a car. I'm yelling at cars everywhere I go, I just got a bike with ceramic cups, my next bike's going to go 90 miles an hour, it's going to have three batteries in, in series. My brother-in-law just made that Tesla plant correct, he had six people under him, he was, he was gone for six months. My sister is a top person in legal in this region for the disabled, she's got a kid who's fourth, fourth level, fourth degree autistic, we're going to get more and more and more children who are autistic, and we need the people who are going to protect them. My brother's kid, he's going up 80, and he's supplying drugs to people who are seniors. Those people in that fire up in Marin were statistically skewed, 100-year-old and his wife. 80-year-olds and above are statistics.
30 seconds, Bill.
30 seconds. How about 30 years? How about 40 years? I'm working on this. That guy with that Tesla that went under the truck had eight speeding tickets, he'd call him a scientist, a guy with a white truck. He stepped up the pace, and my family steps up the pace. Baseball, huh? I hate triples, I'm going to like blossoms.
All right, final, final thought.
Excuse me, I got lots of things to accomplish, I got to go. I got to get out of here and I'll get you later.
All right, thanks, Bill.
I got 217 documents for you to read.
Next speaker, please.
Rom K, and then Ellen Post.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Council members, good evening, gentlemen and gentleladies. Oh, I've already got the long arm, short arm syndrome, cannot see very well. Anyways, I didn't know that wearing red is for showing the opposition.
You missed the memo, huh?
Yeah, from where I come from, it's black, so I am like, I'm going to show, I'm going to show I'm black, right? But here it's red, but I'm all red, right? But anyways, I cannot see this, but many of our residents have covered already exactly the junction, right? I accept, I am one of the guys who blow through the stop signs sometimes. I'm with my daughter, I tell her, can I tell me if I am stopping properly, right? And I still miss at least once a week, right? Because it's really, really hard to stop. It's on a 30-degree angle, and we are adding another road at a 45-degree angle, probably the new Prima Drive. It's, it's an absolute recipe for disaster. And we respect fire chief and firefighters, my neighbor is a firefighter, we love him, right? We are not saying, we are restricting access to the fire emergency vehicle, we are saying, let's make it an EVA access only because just logic tells me the saving 45 minutes is not worth it if you have a regular road. What if, if a car is in the front of the fire truck on a one-way lane? That's going to cause more than 45-second delay, right? So, just simple logic, I just thought of it, that's all I had.
All right, thanks for coming out, Rom. All right, next speaker.
Next speaker is Ellen Post, followed by Udaya.
I would like to just say, this is my house on the corner. They have the fire.
Okay.
For reference. Hannah.
Hi again, I'm Ellen Post, thank you for listening to us again, we really appreciate and appreciate. We really appreciate an opportunity for everybody to come rather than just the two of us. People have said most everything. A few things is, the fire chief before said that everybody was okay with it before, and Clay was okay with it before, everybody was okay with it before. The planning commission was against it, being a full road. They recommended that it be approved as an EVA road. It was approved at the last minute we came to. I'm doing my own timeline because that one wasn't quite how it worked, but so, they changed the agenda at the very last minute, and so there were only a couple of us here, and so that's the reason why we try to get most of our neighborhood here to, well, representatives so that we could say how we really feel about it. It's a bad idea. It's never been a safe idea. If there is a fire and we're trying to get out and all those homes, 500 people are trying to drive out that one road, and so are we, it's going to get bottlenecked, and there's not going to be any fire truck getting anywhere if every single road is backed up, which would be for 800 homes trying to get out. So, again, it really is a safety issue. My fence is so flammable, it terrifies me, and so are a lot of the fences along there because our development was built in 2001, and so we can't afford a $15,000 or $20,000 fence on our half-acre property. All of that is open fence, and then also across from us, our new neighbors who we welcome have all open fences, expecting to have this beautiful little strip of open space and enjoy the solitude and the quiet and the wildlife, and that isn't a bunch of weeds in through there. It's full of wildlife and birds and raptors. I know I say that every time, but that is my thing. And that's the only place they have to hunt, and they're already coming over to hunt over on our side because of all that construction up on the hill. We expected those homes to be up on the hill. They annexed in. We're already trying to live with the fact that we don't get that buffer. They're moving right in, right up to our fences, and I know there's nothing we can do about that, but having that road is just too much for us. It's just not safe. It's not a good idea, and that one way in or out, the fire chief actually said would be illegal in a day, that nobody would build that now, it would be illegal. They would never do that. So, to add that on, you know, with school buses and people throwing a cigarette out the window behind my fence, I'd be running for my life, but if it came up, you know, higher, then we wouldn't have any chance with all that. That looks flat there, but those pictures we brought, because that's what it really looks like, and it's wildland. And so if that catches on fire, we don't have a chance, you know, to get out, and if there was an accident at the bottom, we would not be able to get out.
Okay.
So, obviously, the Napa thing, you know, really made that obvious.
Great, thanks. Thanks, Emily. Next speaker?
Next speaker is Udaya, and then Deborah Glick.
So, thank you, councilmembers. Thank you, councilmembers, for listening me out. So, I had, I think my neighbors covered most of the items, so I am left out with a few questions that I still have.
Sure.
So, right now, what I understand is we have about 400 homes plus another 300 coming up. I feel like we are congested and choked with a small opening to come out, especially during emergency times when people need to come out and the fire service is supposed to come in. How are we going to allow space for the fire service to come inside at this tri-junction area? And I also request the councilmembers to revisit the traffic study that was shown a few minutes back with the number of homes that we have, right? I would like to know how many cars will be packed up from the stop sign towards the Stonebrier as well as the White Rock during peak hours? Because the numbers that were shown was not really realistic. So, I would like to know how this number was arrived at. And the second point I had was, there was also a number shown on the disabled noise study, right? So, we would like to know how this number came about, the noise level. Was some similar simulation done in a different environment, and the noise dB levels were measured? Or they came to this location, especially I'm interested in the interior noise dB level?
Okay.
So, that's the second point that I wanted to stress here. And the third one was, what other options was looked at for providing access to this new community? Apart from the Prima Drive that we are talking about, was there other options looked at, and what are the pros and cons? So, these are the three points that I would like to stress.
Okay. Great, thanks. Thanks, Uday. Okay, next speaker?
Next speaker is Deborah Glick, then Matt Seitz.
Good evening, Deborah.
Good evening. I can tell from your body language you guys are exhausted.
No, we're just getting started.
Thank you. But, you know, I'm not going to bring up more points than what everybody already addressed, but this is about being good neighbors and a developer who's showing all sorts of statistics about why it's great and how you need to have this access road and bringing in selective statistics rather than the people who are going to be here after the fact and having to deal with everything that's been done, as well as the community, right? There's a lot more at stake than just building some new houses. There's going to be people who are going to be living in those homes, and they're going to be, they need services. And it seems a little, I don't know the right word, but it doesn't seem right that you're relying on them to be supported by Eldorado Hills and this whole access is the only way to get in and out for emergencies when that's the only way for the current neighborhood. So, you're really putting extra tax on it. Everyone's talked about this. I don't want to belabor it, but let's be real. If you were in that neighborhood and you heard all these dangers about the access in and out, you've lived it because, like I have with the fire, trying to get out, you wouldn't do it. So, if you wouldn't do it for your family and your community, you know, why is it okay to do that to all of these other people that are living in there? So, that's my main point.
Okay, great, thanks. Thanks, Deborah. All right, next speaker, please.
Matt Seitz, then Dan Abbott.
All right, Matt. Good evening, Matt.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I appreciate you guys bringing this up again so we could go through this. I'm Matt Seitz. I'm the president of Rolling Hill CSD, and I look at this from a lot of different hats, both I live there as well as I have to oversee our parks, our roads, our lighting and everything else. So, a lot of the points have already been brought up this evening, although I'd love to belabor it. I'll do just a little bit. As far as the traffic counts go, the traffic counts, at least with what was presented tonight, are certainly off from what was presented back in December, the December traffic study, when we're looking at 218 traffic flows coming out of Folsom into Stonebrier as well as 149 in the evenings. That's a stark difference from what was just presented this evening, so I'm not sure what the differences were there or what caused that. That's a great concern from our standpoint because we have to maintain these roads. That's why originally we were looking for some sort of concession to maintain these roads from a monetary standpoint, because our community, we don't have a large budget. We don't have anything there to support this additional load. We're not getting anything from anywhere else, and quite honestly, it's the only thing that I can look at on this. I can't look at this from a neighbor's perspective of, you know, traffic backing up to their house. I just have to look at what the CSD is there for. And us, it's for parks, it's for roads, it's for lighting, it's for those maintenance items. We have a lot of concerns with the safety here. We've had a lot of speeding through this, and anybody here can tell you, time and time again, we have volumes and statistics from radar signs from up and down this specific road, and on average, we're looking at anywhere between 37 and 40 miles an hour. That road is set for 25. In order to have police out there just to have tickets for people running stop signs, we can do that. We can call that in. The problem is, is that we're pulling them off of some other duty or some other issue within the community just to stop somebody from speeding. Will it make a difference? Probably not, long-term, because people go right back to speeding again and running stop signs. Ultimately, we really just want the EVA road. It puts a lot of issues to rest for us, both from police, fire, rescue, and as well as any of the maintenance issues that we've got to deal with. So, I don't really have much more to add, and everybody has done an amazing job of really portraying that to you in the right light. So, you know, with that, we're here, we're willing to work with you all as good neighbors, just as I think you're trying to do with us now, so, thank you.
Great, thanks. Thanks for coming out, Matt. All right, next speaker?
Next speaker is Dan Abbott, and then Sharon Williams, if she's here.
Good evening. Thanks for making time for us. So, I've heard a lot of talk about the fire department coming in and out of the Seagres Road, and I think that's been well documented and discussed and some of the problems there. I haven't heard a single word about the police department and how you're going to support police services from an isolated community that is, what, seven miles from basically mainland Folsom, you know? And I see you have a significant problem here on how you're going to solve that without any police support at all. Eldorado Sheriff comes from, there's a station in Town Center, they come from there, they support Eldorado County. I'm unaware of any sort of mutual aid agreement other than the standard stuff where Eldorado Sheriff is going to come up into that and deal with city of Folsom laws and so forth that they're not able to support. So, I ask you to consider that. I think that's a problem for you all, and that is another factor that you're going to have to think about in terms of just general safety. We've talked a lot about that corner and that intersection. I'll reiterate again that it is a problem, and if you haven't been there for a while, you really owe it to yourself to take a look at that. Third, concerning gates. Gates are everywhere. Many, many communities have gates. Yeah, there's a turn at that road. There's nothing in anywhere that says the gate has to be right on that corner. If you're really concerned about trucks slowing down, then move the road, move the gate up a few feet so the truck can get some running room. That's all I have to say about that. Thanks for your time.
Great, thanks. Okay, so, is Sharon here? Sharon Williams? Okay. So, then we have, okay, next speaker?
Next speaker is Tim Halverson.
Good evening. Good evening, City Council and Mayor. Thank you for having us be able to discuss the situation a little bit more. I would say that there was a lot of great points. Like Matt says, I'm also on the CSD board, and, you know, there's certain things that we, you know, that aren't within our purview. From a personal standpoint, I was one of the, my house was one of the houses, as well as Michelle's, that got hit with that fire about four years ago, and we sustained a lot of damage, so I think, you know, access is great, but, you know, there was no gates on our, you know, on our roads at that time. So, one thing that I wanted to mention with regard to the downslopes, the Stonebrier coming towards White Rock, that's about a 13% grade.
So, is that right in here?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the Prima Road extension will end up being a little over an 11% grade, so that's pretty steep. So, when you have a 13 and an 11% grade hitting, you know, the intersection at the same time, that really truly is an issue. And we have kids on skateboards, we have kids on bikes, we have, you know, people walking their dogs. We have a lot of things going on, and I really think that we need to kind of revisit, you know, the EVA access and how important, you know, that would be to alleviate, you know, a lot of the dangers, because you can't thwart, you know, time to get to accidents, you know, by potentially creating some other dangers. And, you know, to me, I think the City Council has that capability. One of the things that I will say is that, and, you know, we love our fire district, but like he said, you know, they're always against anything that could deter them from getting in. So, you know, I appreciate your, Steve's, you know, sentiment about the possibility of looking back at it, but, you know, we've dealt with the fire department many times, and my outlook on that is not positive because we've had dealings with them, and it'll never turn back into anything other than an open road if we make the decision today to not put the gates in, so.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for coming out, Tim. Okay, so, any other requests to speak?
No other requests to speak.
Okay, all right. Well, thanks, everyone, for your civility and salient points there. So, first, let me just address some of the questions that came up, and then we'll deliberate and ask questions amongst ourselves. So, to start out with, we had a question just regarding construction timeline, so just walk me through this, Dave. So, Old Placerville Road from Alder Creek back into the In-N-Out Center? Steve Kron, give us his estimate there?
I think it's Steve Kron's, has a better handle on that. Steve would?
Yeah, you want to come up, Steve, just so we can?
Good evening. Most likely open Placerville Road, probably around Thanksgiving, maybe shortly thereafter.
Okay.
As though it can head southbound in that direction.
So, we're talking about a month from now?
About a month from now.
Okay.
So, we're anticipating. And in addition to that, we're hoping, keeping our fingers crossed, if the weather permits, we'll be able to open up Scott Road, so that should help as well. That should be back open.
You mean the newly renamed East Bidwell?
Correct.
Okay.
Until the signs get up, we're still calling Scott Road.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, so what was the timeline again on that?
I would say hopefully by Christmas.
Okay, okay. And that's what I remember hearing. So, let's see, screening. So, there was mention of screening. I think there was probably some question as to, and there were kind of two parts to that. One was what is it? And then there was a concern about the potential, you know, fire danger to whatever screening ends up there. So, do we have, you know, and I know sometimes that just gets tossed in in generalities. I assume that was vegetation but not determined, correct?
You know, the final design hasn't been completed yet.
Okay, all right.
So, we envisioned a combination of perhaps some, there'll be some retaining walls adjacent to the roadway, perhaps some lower walls.
Right, so...
To minimize lighting impacts for cars coming down the hills.
So, would that be something? And again, so regardless of whether this is a full road or an EVA, are there opportunities at that point to bring in residents who are concerned about, number one, what it is, and number two, you know, its potential, you know, contribution to potential fires? I mean, does that, would that decision be a unilateral decision from the builder, or would there be some input on that?
I believe that's something that at a staff level, when the improvement plans come in, and we evaluate the improvement plans, and then we make sure that the conditions are implemented correctly.
So, I think we definitely want to make sure that there's some sort of an additional piece of language in that condition that we at least reach out to the immediately adjacent property owners along there, so.
Steve, typically...
Yes, so, Steve.
So, Steve, I know when we had this discussion before, and I heard very succinctly from residents about, you know, light intrusion, some noise and that, and I know we were talking about, as you just said, Mr. Mayor, like a small sound wall. When I said, let's put some landscaping in, I meant to diffuse the sound wall ugliness, if you will, and certainly, and I agree with all the residents, I'm not going to put any vegetation up against a wooden fence. That's already a design for disaster, being a wooden fence. So, that's, I want to make it clear, that's what I was anticipating based, and maybe I didn't articulate it well enough, but that's my intention. If we're going to put some type of, kind of like what we did on the extension of East Natoma, we put the sound walls up. I'm the one that said, let's put some ivies there, let's diffuse them, especially, where's the gentleman from Catalantic? Yeah, he's going to be looking down at, staring at cement, you know, and I understand, and, you know, we all have houses where we had a view shed at one time that have been not there anymore. So, our job is, like we do at East Natoma, we prove that we can put a sound wall in for the residents, light diffusing opportunities to keep it out of their houses, but we can also soften it with landscaping. That's what my intention was when I said that, not landscaping up against wooden fences.
Duly noted. I'd add that there'll be irrigation as well, to irrigate.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may suggest, we don't need to modify the conditions of approval since that is not in action, I don't agenda's for tonight, but council can provide direction to staff as to internal processing protocol.
Okay, so let's just, and I'm sure the entire council here will be supportive of, you know, just making sure when you get to that step at the community development level there that the residents are engaged. We could do that, okay?
Yeah, they need to know what we're doing.
Okay, so...[1794.63]
I had a question, Steve.
Sure.
On that same subject, having spent as much time as I have on the planning commission and being the geek that I am, I know that there's got to be conditions in the conditions of approval that address what is to happen with landscaping. Am I correct?
Correct.
So, as long as that is being done in accordance with the conditions, and we're paying attention to what those plant materials are, based on whatever palette was included in the condition, I'm, I'm happy with it. But, but I have one other question.
Sure.
And, you know, I don't know Steve or if the fire chiefs are interested in that, but I'm thinking right now, looking at, looking at, although this is an old overhead, but I'm thinking that development of that area is actually going to actually reduce the fire risk. Because we've got, it's dry grass now.
It's going to be wild.
Am I right?
Well, depends on the fire. Don't, you know.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Okay.
So, so, some other questions that I just, and I don't know how exact these questions can be answered, but we'll give it a stab. So, so, and all I have to work with right now is, you know, what our traffic study numbers showed there. So, you showed the level of A service, correct? You know, this anticipated level eight service. And there was a question related to what sort of stacking at a stop sign could be expected with, and I can't remember the exact numbers on those traffic counts. You know, I'm, I'm not a level of service sort of expert, but, but with, I believe you had AMPM numbers, you know, between 100 and 150 cars per hour. So, is that, you know, maybe two, three, four cars, you know, at worst? Or, you know, again, I'm, and I know there's not an exact answer to this, but just for some context.
We're talking two, three, four cars.
Okay, two or three, four cars. So, so basically, if it's, yeah, yeah, running up and down. So, yeah. Okay. So, so, then noise, obviously, you know, we, we can't get noise measurements. I assume this is modeled based on?
This is modeled by professional noise consulting, yes.
So, and I, and I know it's, you know, you talk about noise. We have the same problems everywhere in Folsom where you can model noise, but when that Harley motorcycle goes by, doesn't matter. So, 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 we are sensitive to that. But I just wanted to get that question answered as far as how that's conducted.
Andy, before we get off the traffic count, I just had one other question, because one of the recent speakers asked the question between the difference in two traffic reports, unless the numbers were wrong. Can you explain where we got to the 100 to 150 an hour during peak hours versus the 400 or something that that gentleman over there, sorry, I can't remember your name, asked about?
There are different numbers in traffic studies, or different scenarios that are looked at. There are existing conditions, there are existing conditions plus project, there are cumulative without project, and cumulative without project. And what I did is I extrapolated the cumulative conditions plus the project, because I thought that'd be the most representative. I also pulled out the numbers specifically for this intersection. So, there are a lot of other numbers that deal with the project as a whole. I pulled out the numbers specific to traffic going through this intersection specifically. So, that may be the reason.
Okay, so, and that is, that was added to the existing traffic count?
I'm sorry, I'm not interested in here.
Okay, so, there's whatever the existing condition is.
Correct.
The numbers, the 100 to 150 vehicles per hour during peak hours, does that include the existing traffic, or is this over and above the existing traffic?
That's specific to this intersection, and that number would be added to the rest of the subdivision.
Okay, all right. Okay, that's a clarification I think they were looking for. And, let's see. So, so, there was one other question related to other access. So, at one point, right, so, so, at one point, this was also planned then, correct?
Right.
And that is not part of, you know, don't get alarmed. So, so, at this point, that this is not planned to be an access across the county line? Or is it?
Maybe I can provide some clarification. When I talk about primary access, primary access, we're using Prima Drive, that was for the phase one portion of the subdivision. That's not for the overall project. Once phase two opens up, we'll have access to Alder Creek Parkway and Empire Ranch Road.
Okay, so what is?
At which point, most of the traffic is probably going to be headed in a westerly direction. But for the phase one portion, this is the primary access. Once phase two happens.
Oh, and then, I see.
Then Alder Creek opens up, and Empire Ranch Road opens up.
Okay, and I think I asked the question earlier today, that phase one is 100, we've heard both 136 and 137. I don't know what the right number is. But my understanding is that prior to building permits being issued for phase two, that other roadway must be open.
That's correct.
So, the maximum that we ever get to on this is the 137 units.
Correct. Okay, so, so, let's see. So, those were the questions I had. So, I'm just going to open this up, so.
Just want to address this question.
Okay, so, we need to deliberate up here.
Right, yeah, we're, okay. So, so, Ernie, question?
The only point I want to say is that, it was, a statement was made that these figures are the developers. There's not a developer in this room. This is not a developer, this is one of the party managers. Okay, just to make that clear.
Yeah, and the figures are coming from a professional traffic study that the city oversees.
Okay, so, so.
One more thing.
Okay, go ahead, Ernie.
Yeah.
Okay, it'll come back to you. So, so, Councilmember Miklos.
Yeah, actually, either Scott or Steve. The question, and you kind of, kind of touched on, and Kerry just hit it a little bit too. They were talking about 135 units in phase one. And so, I'm thinking, you know, phase two can't start until the roadway comes down. That's the future. Is that Empire Ranch Road that's connecting to Eastern Valley, which gives that secondary or?
It's the north-south road right here?
Yes.
That's Empire Ranch Road, correct?
Okay, where are we at with that right now? Anybody?
It's a triangle.
I have a, I have a multiple questions, so I could just stay there. So, where are we at right now?
With Empire Ranch Road. It's not, this, this project will be responsible for constructing portions of the road. But what I think maybe you may be referring to is, is there will be a connection from this subdivision to Alder Creek Parkway across Empire Ranch Road with phase two of the development.
Who's bringing Empire Ranch Road down from, just make it easy, Highway 50 as an example?
As, well, as project, as the project progresses, as goes through each phase, each phase will be required to construct portions of Empire Ranch Road within this development.
Okay, so when I'm looking at this map here, this is the, the builder that's doing phase one, two, three A and four and three B?
Yes.
Same builder? Okay. As I was sharing with the manager, I apologize for people if I was distracting when I went over to the manager. My question was simply this. You know, fire chiefs probably think I have holes in my head. I am one that had lived on the streets and got hurt protecting evacuations, first responses and all that kind of stuff. Bad news is, I got hurt. The good news is, I got to live in Folsom. I moved, got up here. So, I feel every bit of everything you guys are concerned about. So, number one, you guys need a neighborhood meeting to tell your people to slow down, quit running stop signs, including the gentleman that actually admitted it, and I give him ownership for being honest. But you've really got to pay attention. I'm hearing from you residents over and over and over, you got issues within your own neighbors running those stop signs. So, let's just start with that. And we get it all the time, so you're not unique. We get it all the time. In fact, when we put speed enforcement out there, 99% of people that get written up are your neighbors. So, I think a good neighborhood watch is to kind of educate some people more. Where I'm coming from, as I was sharing with the manager, is, you know, I'm looking at 135, 137 units constructed over a period of time. And let's say we went with the EVA. And so, despite what people think, I didn't have a closed mind, I'm actually looking at solutions. We're looking at potentially an EVA, because they don't all go up at one time. However, I would be willing to do that if we could figure out a way to accelerate phase two connection to give a primary access. Because, and something coming down the line with an additional thought. You know, it's another 266 units, but as Kerry pointed out, the condition is they have to provide that access. But where's it coming down from? Is it Empire Ranch? Is it coming in from Eastern? Is it coming in from Alder Creek? What I'm looking for is, and I know it's the best guess scenario, you know, what are we looking at as a timeline for that secondary, in this case, could be the primary access into that subdivision?
I would say the portion of Alder Creek Parkway from Placerville Road East is under construction now, and it goes all the way up to the tank site that's along the boundary there. Excuse me, on the boundary.
Can we put that map up so the residents know what I'm talking about? I'm sorry, I apologize for that. It probably, it's the one that looks like this.
It would be the dark, it says phases two and four, the area.
Yes, oh, there you go.
That's dark.
Yeah, use your pointer and show everybody what we're talking about here, and, and name the roadway so they know. I mean, you and I know what we're talking about, but I think it'd be helpful to do that.
This roadway connection right here is what we're talking about. This portion is being built right now up to somewhere in this vicinity. This will make this connection ultimately. It's being graded, but it's not being constructed at this time. And this project is conditioned to construct, make that connection to Alder Creek Parkway, and this is the extension of Grand Prairie Road is what we're calling it. That's being graded now, but it should be constructed sometime next year, full pavement improvements.
What gives us access into phase two, and which would also obviously be access into phase one? What's the timeline for that?
That would be a question for the developer. I know they're wanting to move forward with phase one. We'd have to find out from him his, his proposal for when he'd want to start phase two.
Because what I'm hearing is, you're going to meet almost at that point where it could come into phase one, it's, would be under, almost, I don't want to say finished, but they'd be pulling permits for number two.
Yeah.
But I'm hearing that you're going to come down lower to the corner of where phase three is. I'm more interested in seeing how quickly we can get that other one into phase one and two, or I didn't hear you correctly.
Yes, that, that would be, is required to be, to make that connection to Alder Creek Parkway, we'll call it, with the phase two development whenever that occurs. Right now, we don't have a timeline for it. Perhaps the developer could speak to that. But it, I know they want to move forward with phase one. I would say as soon as next year.
Okay.
But.
And, and I guess where I'm coming from is, I'd be, I'd be more amenable to a EVA if I had a more accelerated timeline on getting that roadway into phase one and two, because again, 135 units don't pop up in a hurry.
Correct.
So, and, and again, not saying I want to jeopardize any resident of any stretch of imagination. I hate gates. Any delay, I hate gates. Would it be a gated community? Would it be something like that? However, that is a dangerous intersection. Like I said, I've been out there many, many times. You know, I kept an open mind because of the fact that topography and the current construction of that, their subdivision is horrible in design, in my opinion. To have that Manchester gate there, to me, you guys ought to be patting on your CSD to get that gate off of your subdivision, for all the reasons you just said, especially the gentleman, which was very accurate, on the evacuation scenario. Been there, done that, had many streets in Burbank where one way in, one way out. We lost a lot of people, a lot of homes, because someone wasn't thinking about that. They were thinking about, well, let's just have a gate there and just make it exclusive or whatever the case may be. So, there's some, there's some design issues on both sides of the equation that can be done. I'm more interested in saying, I'll vote for the EVA if I get an accelerated timeline getting that roadway into phase one and two, or at least have a commitment that we all can live with, that if they're not meeting that timeline, well, I don't even want to go there. I'd like to see an accelerated timeframe on getting that roadway in there, which then I would support an EVA, number one. Number two, I'd like to see whoever's in charge of that other gate on Manchester, for all the reasons, not only your own subdivision, but you actually, you guys actually made even a stronger argument that that gate on your own side should be removed, because you also said you had, obviously, the senior citizens gated, gated community there. You now have, you know, the other new home builder that's also accessing all that. So, you're all creating the same scenarios at the choke point, if you will, which is White Rock and Stonebrier. And so, let's all work together, figure out a massive regional solution down there, which is why us in your county is working on that connector to widen White Rock to help that choke, choke point out. But I'd like to, do we have a builder representative here to talk about that roadway?
Yes, the developer is here for the subdivision.
Okay, well, maybe he can give me an idea of their timeframes, because to me, that's very important to me, because I'm looking at it this way. If we can reduce the amount of pavement they have to put down by not having a full roadway, change to an EVA, and, and take those funds and maybe accelerate that, and as I shared with the manager, again, that's not something we can make unilaterally. But maybe look at possibly a development agreement with a reimbursement agreement. Maybe we can use some of our roadway funds, accelerate something sooner or later, and as the phases come in, then we do a reimbursement agreement, things like that, or vice versa. I'm just looking at trying to find a timeline, and that's what I'm looking at.
I think Mr. Loomis can provide that.
Okay. Hi, Clay.
Good evening.
Did I confuse you enough?
Right.
No, you're fine. Clay Loomis, and again, I want to say thank you to the neighborhood that's here, and I appreciate council and the mayor taking the time to listen to them. We've tried to be a good neighbor throughout the process. We've tried to look for solutions that would work for both sides. Steve, we'd be open to, I mean, just as when we worked with the planning commission, we'd be willing to look at, you know, taking the primary access from Alder Creek Parkway. I think, and I'm, you know, listening in the background, trying to think about what's going on as well. When they're talking about one access out of Stonebrier, they're only looking at the traffic from Folsom going into Stonebrier. So, Prima Drive actually acts as a secondary access to get out of Stonebrier. So, that actually helps that situation. But to your, your point, we would be open to looking at accelerating that and making that work. And really, the, the reason that's phase one is because that's where the sewer and water goes out for EID. And so, phase two goes out a different direction, but we'd be, we'd be open to looking at that working stuff.
And I know, and I understand, you know, marketing has a lot to do with it. I mean, that's unfortunately the, the nature of the beast. In your, in a normal, there's no such thing late in the last eight years, but in your best crystal ball estimate guess, if you will, what would you believe could be the best estimated accelerated timeline that you guys could be comfortable in getting there? And if there's a gap in that, you know, I would like to be aware of what that gap would be, whether it be time and/or obviously funds, obviously, because it's a marketing issue. Sell houses, infrastructure. Sell houses, more infrastructure. If you can provide something to ask, I know you can't do it while you're standing here.
I could give you an idea.
Okay, that'd be great.
I mean, if that, if that helps.
Sure.
So, we are processing, we're in the process of preparing the phase one grading plans and ready to submit probably the end of October.
Can I have one of the staff folks get that last map back up there?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that'd be great.
I think somebody accidentally hit a button or something.
I think I've.
Okay, we'll blame it on you, Clay.
That's fine. And so, we'd look to start construction next spring for phase one, home construction starting 20, you know, after the Super Bowl 2018, and probably a two-year build out for phase one. During that timeframe, we would start construction on phase two. Three to four years, we'd be starting our first home in phase two. So, probably looking at, best case scenario, four years outside, maybe six years for starting that.
Doesn't the roadway have to be accessible before you can actually put the first stick and brick up in phase two, though?
For phase two, yes. So, so, we'd be processing that. That roadway would go in, and then before we pull our first building permit for phase two, that Alder Creek Parkway would be in. So, not, probably, in a perfect scenario, probably 75% of phase one would be built out at that point.
So, so, Clay, I'm sorry, I know, get, so, so, remind me, so first house potentially built and occupied in phase one, when, Clay?
So, starting, sales would start in spring of 2018.
2018, okay, got it. Thanks, Kerry, sorry.
So, basically where we are is that the worst case scenario is that the other access that basically connects between, well, really at phase one, right next to phase two, has to be done before the first building permit for phase two gets built. So, worst case scenario is that 136 units would have access to Prima Drive, because where I'm kind of going with this is the opposite, I think, of what Steve's talking about. I would prefer to leave that open for the, for the time being, and look at it annually if need be. And once that other, the other access to Alder Creek Drive is done, take another look at, make it an EVA.
I don't think.
We'd be open to that as well.
Please.
Yeah.
It doesn't help if you yell from here.
Okay, yeah, yeah, pull down.
You don't have to agree with me, but I get to have an opinion. So, so, are you done?
What's, at least?
Andy, I had a couple more questions I wanted to ask.
Okay, so, so, Ernie?
I want to ask you still.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I talked to Clay yesterday. Now, my senior moment's over. Now, I remember what I was going to say. And it wasn't because Clay stood up there. But I called Clay yesterday because on the staff report, it said Prima Drive is going to be the primary access to one. And I didn't know what primary meant, because we all agreed way back, there'd be no construction, car, trucks coming over there. And Clay affirmed to me that, no, there would be no constructions regardless of what type of road. Obviously, with an emergency, they can't.
Regardless of EVA, full vehicular access.
No.
Site construction development, everything will come from the east.
Okay.
Or from the west, excuse me.
So, so, the, I guess, Clay, so the add-on question to that then is, so phase one first homes start to get developed there in spring of next year, and we don't have this road up here yet, or we do? And we don't have this road up here yet, or we do? Is the only access to the first homes here actually Prima?
Yeah, Prima, so there's a full vehicular access to, from Prima Drive under this scenario. The emergency access goes out to the north and to Winterfield.
Okay.
So, if you point your arrow, yeah, right there.
Okay.
Just a second. And then, so because of taking the construction traffic to the west, we envision that there'd be some at-grade connection from Phase One going to Alder Creek Parkway for a gravel road or something like that.
So, to clarify then, at least initially, these homeowners have to come out this way?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Well, that, and, you know, that might be for a short period of time, but, yeah, so.
I think Steve was actually where you were going with what you were saying. I really think, if you want to continue, actually, I'd like to hear the rest of it.
Actually, Andy kind of touched on exactly where I was going. That was the question I was going to ask was if that's the only way they can get in and out, let's say we put a gate in, it was not going to be essentially really called an EVA. It's going to be called a gate. Because the only way, I mean, emergency's coming in, unless it's full road access, it has to be two ways for them as well. So, those folks are going to access Stonebrier and Prima Drive regardless if it's a gate or not a gate because that's the only way they can get in and out.
Under the current design, yes.
Yeah, so in other words, it'd almost be like you live in a gated community, here's a clicker and your gate opens. So, that was the one question. The other question I had, and again, I don't have the full thing in front of me. I'm sure there's a reason being for it. At the very lower right-hand corner where 3B is, it shows obviously one of the roadways coming out of the project into something. And then, right below that, to the south is White Rock Road. What's the something it's connected to? Is that where Empire Ranch comes down farther or Alder Creek? Or who comes down that far where it's eventually going to connect to?
Yeah, it's Russell Ranch, I think Phase Two or Three.
Down there?
And then, it connects into Empire Ranch Road out to White Rock.
That's way down the line.
Right there.
Let me ask, Clay, okay, if and when you did agree on the planning commission to put the emergency up there, what did you propose the access out of? When? Where was it going to go out?
Under that scenario, the primary access was going to come from Alder Creek Parkway. So, our vehicle access was going to come from Alder Creek Parkway into Phase One with Prima Drive being an EVA for sewer and water and an EVA.
So, that means if the EVA goes in there, you can still go the same way you agreed to on the planning commission, is that right?
You could still go that direction, yes.
Right, so I just want to, I just want to finish, yeah, my confusion here is, so, Clay, the first house gets built here, they have a way to get out other than Prima?
Yeah, there's an EVA that would go either out Winterfield or out to Alder Creek Parkway. So, either one of those darker lines.
Okay.
So, okay, so Clay, so what I just heard again, and I apologize because I'm also tired like these folks. We've worked all day and we're still sitting here. If I just heard you correctly from the planning commission, and again, I don't have that stuff because it's been old. If you were envisioning originally that was agreed to the planning commission, that being an EVA at Prima Drive, your primary access was coming in from Alder Creek?
That's correct.
Okay, why can't that be done now?
It can be.
Can be done.
Okay, that's where I'm coming from. So, I guess where I'm feeling a little befuddled is, and I guess it's to Roger's point, and I missed it a couple of meetings ago, is that wasn't really clear, in my opinion, and maybe I was asleep at the wheel sitting here, that, you know, that primary access could come in, which makes, and I understand from El Dorado Hills Fire, I mean, it's their jurisdiction and I appreciate everything being an ex-fireman, believe me, I don't like to bill in any kind of delay. But if we know that we have a major thoroughfare coming in via Alder Creek, and I certainly understand for what, where Chief Felipe's hiding back there, where he has to still come in. I mean, that's a difficult design period. I think both sides of jurisdictional, given the topography is poor design on both sides, but it is what it is, we have to figure it out. I'm not a fan of EVAs. I'm looking at it as more of, okay, it's a quasi-gated community to a degree. But if I feel more comfortable to some degree, there's a little straighter shot coming in from Alder Creek into the Phase One, it's a small portion of things. I might be willing to go with the EVA on Prima Drive. I'm not happy about it. I'd like to find out where that side of the county line will be as demonstrative in their commitment to clean up that act at that intersection. Because I'm agreeing with you guys. If I heard many men, including the little girl that was talking about how her voice wasn't heard where she came from, it's being heard here. If she's got to stand on a street corner now worrying about people running over her kids, we're not doing that. We're not even there. So, let's figure out a way to do that. The other thing I was going to ask you, Clay, because again, I apologize, I don't remember the actual, all the conditions in there, but I heard someone from the CSD say something valid. You guys had some kind of budget agreement for some roadway issues. That goes away if you put an EVA in, does it not?
It does, yes.
Okay, okay. Mr. Mayor, I'm actually done with my comments. I just want to get some clarifications.
Okay, so, Ernie, and then we'll get to Roger.
Okay, I want to recap a little bit.
Are you done with me, Ernie?
Yeah, I'm done. I hope.
Actually, before you, oh, just real fast before you go. After the planning commission, was there discussion on types of gates and like sirens-activated?
I believe at that, there was some discussion from the fire chiefs about what kind of gates would go in. And I think there were some conditions that it would be to their approvals.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had. Thanks.
Thanks, Clay.
Thanks. Okay.
All right, I'm just going to recap where I'm at. If I can stay awake, okay? I'm younger than these guys. I get tired, I don't get tired.
For the record, I'm not tired.
That's a question. I'll leave it alone. When this came to, I was under the impression from the planning commission that the road was solved. And then, just before we heard the approval, we had a change. And the change was legit because this gentleman next to me, Steve, had knowledge that me or Roger did not have. We didn't know what happened back in 2001, okay? So, when I came, I happened to meet with Clay the day before, on a Monday, through a briefing of the project. At that time, right at the end, everything's done, we're leaving the restaurant, and they mentioned that the road has changed. I said, what? I thought it was all solved, okay? So, when I came in on Tuesday, we had a whole brand-new thing because there was a different input, different idea. Roger had no knowledge at all. I had a little knowledge, Roger had nothing until he came. But as that went through, my only concern at that time, not only was, you know, me and Steve get along pretty well and he has experience, so I appreciate that. But my concern at that time was the notification of the residents. Because from '75 that I was told at the planning commission, and I didn't go so I could be honest at the city council, the five or six or seven that I saw that night, I felt that that was not the right thing. We pride ourselves in trying to have good representation on the subject with our people, okay? You're not our people, but you're our people, okay? Regardless. Excuse me. So, on that night, as we went through the dialogue, I voted yes. Only because I knew from previous experience on this council, and I'm fairly new, if you vote no, you're done. Any further discussion? But if you vote yes, then you can ask for a reconsideration of the vote. And that's why I voted yes. Not that I believed, but I heard that night, okay? Because I needed more information and I wanted to hear from all the people. And there was only four or five out in the audience that night. So, I voted no. And I did the following meetings, I asked for the reconsideration. And this is where we are right now after a couple of the meetings. Steve says, he's been up there a lot. I drove, I didn't drive, I was driven up to that site on Thursday or Friday, I think it was. And we went the back road to White Rock and then into Stonebrier. When you got on White Rock before you got to your major road, it's like a death wish, okay? And I asked the city manager the other day, who owns that road? Who owns that portion? Is it El Dorado or is it Sacramento County? Somebody should do something. Because we were driving, I think it was a 50 or 55 mile an hour on that road, a two-lane road. A poor bouncing, jumping. So, when I got into your area, I thought, whoa, this is moved and nice. So, I went around and I ended up going and seeing, and earlier on, one of your district people talked about, are people going to come use your parks? No disrespect. I looked at your park, okay? I can assure you, we will not come up in your, although I'm not criticizing your park because that open space wide gives a lot of opportunities that are very nice to run the dogs, all that stuff. But then, on the way home, could you put that other, the big map that shows Prima Drive? On the way coming down from the top, I decided I'm going to stop at the little Prima Drive and I'm going to look around and see what I, so just stopping on that little bit of space and seeing the cars come down off that hill in the site was horrible. And they were speeding down there. In fact, when I got done looking at all that other area in the new construction, I said, my lord. And we had a heck of a time getting on the road to be safe because you weren't, you could not see up that hill. You could not really get out. So, when we got on, we just gunned it and went. And lucky nobody was there. So, I, I'm glad to hear Steve give some more consideration to the emergency because I think that's where I go, that's the way I will vote tonight. Only because, only because, you know, I know these guys on the council, we all think alike of that. Some of the stuff we do is short-range. But if we put that road in the way we wanted to, it's long-range for the neighbors. And well, you're not our people, so it's called, you're not our citizens, you're our people. And we have to respect people. And when you buy a home, you know less than when we buy a home, okay? And the home is as precious to you as it is to us. So, therefore, when we make decisions like this, we have to consider you part of us, okay? Otherwise, it's not, it's not fair. And I'm not worried about, I've had people ask me, well, are you siding for El Dorado and versus Folsom? Are you putting Folsom? I never in 31 years have voted on anything in this council or in my park experience that put anybody in Folsom at risk. I would never do that. So, therefore, I said, no. But I'm voting as people in consideration of people, whether on that side of the line or this side of the line. So, I'm glad to hear the dialogue today. I did check on the amount of money and then for the district. I would talk to the fire chief back there and the water people back there. As I understand it, there's a law that gives them quite a bit of money. You might want to negotiate some more to get to your CSD because there's quite a bit of money involved in that deal. I would hear anywhere $68 million. That's a lot of money in my mind, okay? And that's not going away because that's forever, okay? The fire department will have the control of this site forever. The water department will have the control of this particular site forever. It's not going to change, okay? So, the money's there. CSD, go get it, maybe. But anyways, I think all the dialogue today has went the right way. We're listening to the people. We're not putting anybody at risk on our side or your side more. That road is dangerous. And the developer, as he indicated, is willing to go along. And Steve made a good point. And they were ready to make, based on the planning commission, they were ready to do it. And Steve wasn't aware of it, and now that he is, he's going to consider it. So, I think tonight's been very productive. And I know my vote will go to make it an emergency road. That's all.
Can I just have that one last question for Clay while he's here? Hello, Clay.
He's hiding back there.
Just one quick question, I promise. Only because it's on, indicated already, so I just want to clarify for everybody. So, when I was looking at the map that used to be up there that shows this one.
Can we flip back to that map?
Yeah, flip back to it because I actually figured out how to get the pointer to work. It's called change batteries. Okay, so in this diagram, it shows as, you know, Prima Drive being the main access. And you have this one up here saying an EVA. And I want to throw it out for you folks because I think it actually has two benefits. That's, and again, one of the things you said initially was roadway here, EVA, and this is still indicated as EVA. I'm thinking for a lot of reasons, and I apologize and feel sorry for certain folks that had that fire and lost their property, fortunately not lives. If this is going to be an EVA backup, the original planning commission decision recommendation was you guys coming in from here, creating the EVA here. And this also, what we're looking at tonight says EVA up here. Why can't we do both EVA and EVA? Because I'm looking at it this way. I heard the residents loud and clear on the other side. And I'm looking at, and again, compromising where I normally wouldn't go potentially with two fire chiefs I have respect very much and their professional respect even more. But if I am allowing residents from this side an escape route and I'm around, on both sides, between that one and that one, that can get to a primary, they get the heck out of Dodge if they need to, and knowing that other infrastructure's coming on our side, then it makes it a little bit more safe for them. And hopefully, they get rid of that gate on Manchester to make it easier and safer for them. The improvements we know are coming with White Rock Road, also what CalAtlantic is building, some of their infrastructure, eventually all be tied in together. I'm looking at something that might work a little better in my comfort level to make that an EVA. If I can also give them that, knowing our primary is going to come from here. Any thoughts on when that, if that could be possible?
Yeah, let me address that. So, that was meant as a temporary EVA for Phase One when Alder Creek, just looking at Prima Drive and then that being the secondary access as an EVA. Ultimately, where the road kind of, where the EVA turns and heads down to Winterfield.
Kind of goes like that?
That's a, that's a two-to-one slope. There's some rockeries in there. So, that will, that ultimately goes away. It was just a temporary.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with that. I'm thinking if we just still throw it in for temporary for now, and Carrie brought up a good point, and I think they're all agreeing, there's issues over there as far as topography, brush, whatnot, and whatever. If we have an opportunity to just make something very temporary and be extremely temporary, because believe me, unless the fire and police or sheriffs had to get up there, they wouldn't be using it. But just knowing that it's there in the case of the extreme emergencies that we're now getting a little more awareness and notification on what happened in Sonoma, NAP, and all those. Yeah, someone can go, oh, well, I'll jump on the bandwagon. Well, sometimes you do when you realize that there's some design issues that unfortunately, you know, put people in harm's way. Not, I mean, it was the best they could at the time they planned it out, so I'm not degrading anybody. But I'm thinking if there's something, you know, reasonable, even if it's just, you know, let it be a dirt path, like you said, and a rocky topography. But if it's just a, something there just temporarily, and then when the rest of the infrastructure comes in, that can completely go away or you just leave it temporarily because the operative word being temporarily. It's going to go anyways because when that Phase Two is done, it'll become permanent roadway areas. And you'll have better circulation with the other roadway things, so it really wouldn't be as necessary. I'm just thinking down the line until we have the rest of the infrastructure following.
Yeah, I think we could obviously look at that, Steve. The one thing.
No, let's just.
No, no, I want to concentrate on my line of thinking.
That's okay, let us deliberate here, let us deliberate.
No, I'm just saying, I live in, there is a fire lane already there with a dirt path.
So, the one that's, so the one I'm pointing to up there, there's already a gate up there? Okay, well, then, never mind.
So, just, just let me repeat for the record, just so that's on the microphone. So, we had, is it Michelle or, okay. So, Michelle just pointing out that where that secondary EVA access is, there's already a gate there. So, I just, just for the record.
For clarity, I think it's rocks, is that correct?
There's rock border with a green fire lane.
Okay, so there is a manual gate there. Because to me, to me, then I'm hearing that they potentially have two evacuation routes, either rock gate and of course, a regular electronic EVA if we do it, if we go that way.
Yeah, and if that could be gravel, just if you go in, you start paving it and then we're just adding cost on top of cost.
No, I wasn't looking at that. I was just looking at, you know, they already have a second way. Again, I'm always thinking massive temporary for a secondary evacuation route because I know the infrastructure from Phase Two will take care of it down the line anyways.
Yeah, so temporary.
Never mind, you're good. There's already one there.
All right.
He showed you a paycheck.
So, Roger?
I'm good.
Okay, Carrie?
I'm just concerned about the early phases and the delays from, we know how long it's going to take. Well, the new primary road's not going to be there. The fire station on the Folsom side's not going to be there. So, that's just going to make it that much more difficult, in my opinion, for El Dorado Hills Fire to get up there. It is technically their service district. I think once the fire station's built on the Folsom side, then I'm going to be far less concerned about it because I think the response times are going to be much shorter. So, I'm really only concerned about leaving that open. So I'm only, I'm really only concerned about leaving that open in the early phases, and I'd like to see it probably closed later, once the rest of the roadway's in there.
So, so, okay, so any other questions, comments? So, so it sounds like there's, I suppose, let me just share a few notes that I wrote down here, as I was listening to a lot of the comments here. And I suppose, and, you know, it's been alluded to here, it's important to remember that today, tomorrow, and forever, that that section is part of Eldorado Hills Fire Service Area. So, so, so we want to make sure, you know, you know, some of the things that go through my mind are, is, you know, we talk about two gates, and I understand the need for two gates, because if we just put one there, you know, people are just going to use whatever EVA access road there, and, you know, there might be some trouble just with, you know, people gathering on that road or whatever. But just trying to figure out a way to just use one gate instead of two, but I realize that might not.
Trigger at the same time.
Yeah, so, okay, so mentioned, just, okay, so.
Is it a paved road, or is it going to be?
It'll be an EVA road, however we do, it's got to be paved, obviously. You're going to have thirty-five to sixty-five thousand pound fire trucks running on that road, so it will be paved. So, so I guess, and I'll, I'll just kind of, I guess, put together a motion here, is, is that that end up being a, an EVA access. Again, with, you know, based on, I think, all of our very heightened concerns that however we set the gate access there is minimized to the greatest possible extent, because for a significant amount of time, and I heard mentioned from the audience there, expediting the construction of the Folsom side, there's, there's two issues there that run through my mind. Number one, we need, and I think it was mentioned, the number of houses before we have the impact fees to build that station, number one. But again, I get back to the fact that this is Eldorado Hills Fire Service District, and it does get easier for them to serve this once Empire Ranch Road is all, all into there. So, so there's, I think the compromise, the sacrifice here for service is, is limited. You know, over time, that'll improve. So, you know, I'm just getting the sense here, and I'll just move that that road be constructed as an EVA access. Again, the other thing that was mentioned related to screening was that, you know, we just make sure that, although I don't know if that gets so critical with an EVA access, so again, reach out to the, to the, to the neighbors there. And, and I appreciate Clay being here and, you know, helping us shape timelines and timeframes and that sort of stuff, so.
I'll second your motion.
So, so seconded by Councilmember Gaylord. Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, just one last commentary is, is how the developer worked with the fire chiefs, plural, in the actual placement of the gate. Because I appreciate the sloping of where it is, because, again, they have to stop until that gate opens. So they need to be placed, or whatever is required to allow the engines, or the trucks, or the medics, or even the sheriffs, to be able to re-accelerate in a safe and expeditious manner, once they're stopping at the gate. And that's the only way, and I'll support that motion.
Yep, and I'm amenable to that, and, and I guess the last thing I'll add is related to the, to the commentary of our fire chiefs. You know, one thing I always really appreciate is when they, they mention that there really are no borders, and, and I know that's the way you operate. And down, again, down the road, when more of this is built out, you know, that'll be easier. But, but this is, you know, this is a compromise on some potential service time into that Phase One, potentially Phase Two. What was the, just remind me, the, the number of residence units that trigger the first fire station construction, was that mentioned here tonight?
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred? Okay. So, and, you know, who knows the way the market's going, that might happen sooner than we, sooner than we think. So, so with that, we have a motion and a second on the floor, please call the rule.
Councilmembers Miklos?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Reluctantly, yes, I'm just worried about the response times there.
Ken, Maureen.
I think we all are, yes. Okay, so until we bring this back again, no, I'm just kidding. So you can all, all go home now.
I hope you all T-vo'd the World Series.
Okay, so, let's see. Next item, please.
Next item on the agenda is city manager report.
I'll have to stay for the city manager report.
Yeah.
Everett, I apologize for the apparent lack of interest in your report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just a few items this evening, just to let everyone in the community know, we are resuming work on the Rainbow Bridge this week to make repairs on the arches and columns. This will be largely visible by the community, but we don't anticipate significant traffic impacts. There will be nighttime closures over the Rainbow Bridge late in November, but largely during the commute hours. While we may be working and they may see evidence of construction and maintenance work on Rainbow Bridge, traffic impacts should be minimal. We will, however, though, have lane closures on Iron Point Road in order to replace the trees that are in the Iron Point Road median, those repair trees that have become hopelessly infested with mistletoe. We'll be making those repairs between the commute hours, about eight-thirty to AM to two-thirty PM, and we'll be replacing those trees with a more durable species, because those ornamental pear trees have relatively short life spans and are, are quite susceptible to disease. The work at, on the new signal at the intersection of Golf Links Drive and Silver Horns started this week as well. There'll be new ADA ramps and new crossing facilities, and extension to Class One Bike Trail will be completed by this upcoming winter. And lastly, this evening, our public safety open houses are very popular, as was evidenced by our annual fire open house just a couple of weekends ago. And so we're going to have our police open house this Saturday, October twenty-eighth, from ten AM to two PM. We're having a Halloween theme, so if you want your little ghouls and goblins to dress up like police officers and detectives, and maybe even canines, come on out, bring them out.
Dress up as a dog.
Meet, meet with our police chief and her fine staff, and you can learn about our SWAT teams, our crime scene investigations, our canine and mounted units, and any number of other things that we do in service to the community. So I look forward to seeing you all there. That's Saturday, the twenty-eighth, between ten and two. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Roger, what do you got, anything for us this evening?
Yeah, I want to remind everyone that the homecoming parade for Folsom High is tomorrow, and then also, in the spirit of Veterans Day, I actually had the, the opportunity to sit and have breakfast with a select, a group of veterans called the Hounds of Hell. And it was striking, because these folks took a pledge, as twenty-one out of thirty of their troop actually have had some sort of PTSD or stress and committed suicide. So it's, it's said that, I think, every sixty-five minutes this happens in our, with our veterans, and so it's extremely important. It hit me too, when folks say, thank a vet, I mean, it's, it truly means, thank a vet, and show your support, and let them know you care. So hopefully, with this Veterans Day, we all kind of think about that, because it really set me back a little bit, but it was humbling to, to break bread with them, so. Other than that, I'm, that's it.
Well said, well said, Roger. Steve?
Yeah, first thing I want to do is I want to bring to the community's awareness that we have a very special student at Theodor Judah. He was recently just featured on ABC World News Tonight with David Muir. He's a fifth grader at Theodor Judah named Nathan Zhang. Hopefully, I don't pronounce his, pronounce his name too horribly, Z-H-A-N-G. And I guess he is so well-renowned at playing the piano, besides, he likes to play at lunchtimes, he's played at Carnegie Hall even. Anyway, so I want to take a shout-out to, to him, and congratulations to his parents, I've got to be very, very proud. And it's also nice to know that we have those kind of savants in our city. So a little five-year, fifth grader playing at even Carnegie Hall, so pretty cool. For those that hadn't heard, Dodgers won the first game three to one. They set a record for the fastest World Series game so far to date in history. I guess it was pretty boring.
I think it was also the highest temperature ever at a World Series game.
Yes, it was, as a matter of fact, it was. That was the other one. Other than that, looking forward to the Veterans Day Parade. Ernie, thank you for, again, taking the lead role for you and the FAA, and it's a lot, a lot, a lot of work. It's herding more than just a herd of cats, it's like a world of cats. So looking forward to another successful parade date, and I hope everybody can come out and participate and show your support for our men and women in armed forces. We can never say thank you enough, so looking forward to that. With that, I'll say good evening.
Thanks, Steve. Ernie?
I'll echo that for the Veterans Parade, we were twenty-five hundred a couple days ago in climbing. That's a little down from last year, but we lost three of our bands, because it's on a Saturday, and all the band competition in the world is on Saturday. But no, and the Folsom High Homecoming, if I'm not mistaken, it's on Sutter Street? Is that correct? That's the first time, and that should be really unique. So if you can go down, I'm going to try to get down there, and it should be great. That's about it.
All right, great, thanks, Ernie. Kerry?
I want to, Robert's still here, I want to thank everybody in the Parks and Rec staff, and everybody that works for the city of Folsom, for all of the hard work that went into the great opening of the Johnny Cash Trail, the wonderful dinner, and I apologize to Robert for texting him early on Sunday morning to say, did someone forget to reopen the trail? But I guess unfortunately, it didn't get reopened until one, because they had to move all the tables and chairs from the night before. So I'm frankly, kind of surprised we weren't getting emails about, why is the trail closed? All the media on the planet was there on Saturday morning, and then you closed it four hours later. But anyway, fabulous job on that. And because I live around the corner from here, I get to see just how many people are utilizing it, and it's frankly amazing how many people are utilizing that portion of the trail. That's awesome. And now, it used to be that there was a lot of people that were going along the lower portion, along Natoma Street, but now I'm actually seeing people venturing up the hill and then back down the hill, both walking in on bikes, so that's great. I suppose, even though this was an Eldorado Hills problem, just a reminder tonight, with all of the speeding, I personally feel bad for the people that live in Stonebrier, but I guess, until we reminded them, I don't think they realized it's their neighbors that are speeding. So that goes on in our neighborhoods as well. So just please pay attention, kids are out, Halloween's coming up, and don't run over any little ghouls and goblins, they're kids, they're not paying attention to you, you have to watch for them. Unfortunately, I will not be able to attend the Veterans Day Parade this year, so I hope that goes well. I know that the Marine Corps League Ball is coming up at the same time, so if anybody's interested in that, you can feel free to contact me, and I can put you in touch with the folks at the Marine Corps League Ball to, in the Marine Corps League, to get access to tickets, or you can probably reach those folks in the bar at the VFW almost any evening. So with that, I will say drive carefully, and again, the, the piece about the young man at Theodor Judah was awesome. I did see it on TV, and I know Sarah Aquino posted on her Facebook page, and I shared it on mine, so I'm going to go home tonight and see how many of my friends on the East Coast liked it. But it was a lovely, lovely interview, and, and the young man, who's only ten years old, said, I'm just so, I think it's so important for me to give up my research, my recess, so I can play classical music for the first graders during their lunch, because I think it's really good for them. It was just awesome.
Great, thanks. Thanks, Kerry. So yes, the Marine Corps Ball, I will be at that, so excited about that. The Veterans Parade, I will publicly invite Ernie, I've got a, my own personal electric golf cart that, that I would invite you to ride in with me. It's even got a little horn that you can toot along the way.
Can I toot it?
No, you just push it with your foot, so. And then, and then, you know, happy to have the FAA using a trailer that I have, so I'll have that down for you as well. So, so yeah, great, great event there. And then, the only thing I'll add that wouldn't otherwise be repetitive, is we did do a dedication for the completion of the spillway gates, right next to, right next to our Folsom Lake Crossing Road, and we saw construction going on there for years and years. So the completion of that was, was dedicated, so it is fully operational now. We saw some testing of that, I believe, late last winter and spring. And the reason I bring it up is a number of reasons, it's certainly a milestone, but Congresswoman Matt Suie specifically handed me a nice little memento here, just showing kind of some pictures of the work, and then the dedication date. So I will hand this off to our Public Works Director, and you can, you can put this somewhere, but, but yeah, it was very nice of her to, and, and she mentioned the reason was, is that, you know, working with staff, and certainly city council, city manager, there was some aggravation associated with that. You know, gosh, what was it? The road closure was from one-thirty to two-thirty, or something like that, for blasting for quite a while?
But there is a time that a previous Public Works Director tried to close the road between Thanksgiving and Christmas, and I remember calling that Public Works Director saying, what are you thinking? No one can get to shop in Folsom if you do that.
Right, so, so it was, there was, and they appreciated the cooperative spirit that really everybody in Folsom shared with getting that complete. So, so I wanted to thank Congresswoman Matt Suie for thinking of that, and really, all the residents who did put up with, you know, some of the struggles getting, getting that done. But I guess the next project is the mini race, so hopefully that won't be quite as, quite as impactful. So, so with that, meeting adjourned just before ten PM.